Good evening, everyone. If you're watching this, you're watching the Town Hall of Fame Board Selectment for Tuesday, March 11, 2020. And as is our custom, we will start with the question. I'd like to introduce the line of United States and our Republic, for which stands one nation, under God, and the principle of公平正义 for all. We have an appointment at 6:30, so we'll put off our regular business until we've concluded our interviews. What we want to do is...
I'm sorry, I closed the door.
...the Control Officer. And it starts with our first candidate tonight, who is Amanda Curry. Would you like to sit up? I think what would be appropriate, if you wanted to just close a couple of things about yourself and why you're in this position?
Well, I recently moved away from Massachusetts and town Halifax. My husband was born and raised in Halifax. He's moved in with his family and our children. His family offers a lot more support than we've had in my hometown for the last 10 years. So we've relocated in Massachusetts to get some family assistance and be able to have family that help support our children. Now we can work and purchase a home of our own. So we are actually living right around the corner in Halifax. I've always been interested in animal control positions. They're operated, I believe similarly but also very different. Where I was from Connecticut, as I was in the city, it was a little bit busier and there was different requirements. I've always worked with animals for over 15 years. I have loads of experience in anything from wildlife management to rehab teams, working with aggressive dogs and canine officer dogs. And it's something I've always been interested in but haven't been able to do in Connecticut. And when I sell the opening in Halifax, I kind of had to apply right away.
That's good. I was gonna ask, with your experience with aggressive dogs, I saw a resident in life in Buffalo. Do you have the availability?
So I'm very open right now. I know it is a part-time position. I am looking to work full-time, whether that's one job or two jobs. My husband's working for the town of Edmonton and my babysitter is his mother and his grandmother and his sister, so I have a lot of support for my kids here, so I am very open as far as my work hours. I haven't nailed down anything because I wanted this to be my first priority even since it is part-time, and I can't work around that if I need it.
Oh, I'm not sure if it's a full-time or part-time, is that, or some combination?
Some combination, yes.
Troy, I didn't know if you wanted to just give an overview of what the position...
Well, I was gonna ask if you read the job description, if you're familiar with what the job details and how everyone raises their whole, which are times.
Yeah, okay.
As long as she's ready.
Okay.
Everybody's just in minutes apart.
Troy, my next question is, how do you deal with, I understand that you said you deal with just dogs, and you're a little there and there. How do you deal with people who are just as interested with dogs?
Even though it's definitely not my preferable work, I've worked with a lot of customer service and a lot of angry clients, both in and outside of professional situations. I think I'm very good at handling calm and handling angry people. I've had several customer service jobs and I've worked in very different areas that have very high level angry clients for various reasons. I've been a manager in many places. I was one of the head managers at my last job, so I kind of got directed to all being clients and customers. Working in animal rescue with my family in places I've volunteered for years, we get a lot of different types of people and I've pretty much seen and handled those about everything. I find aggressive dogs a little easier to handle than people, but I can handle them.
But Mr. Carey says it's normally not a dog issue, it's people.
Yep.
Have you ever had to work with somebody that's had to have their dog put down after?
Yes, for various reasons, medical and behavioral. I've been there firsthand and I've also helped people and consulted people and kind of talked people through on their dog. It's kind of...
And not with professional service providers such as attorneys, engineers, or third-party consultants?
Can you give us a second? All of them favor?
Aye.
All right, can you answer?
Okay. Then for Upton Street, the board had asked about the back taxes on this property. This is one of the foreclosed properties. It has a building on it that I'm working on the RFP for the demolition. Back taxes on it were $66,000.
An aggressive situation multiple ways of situation and things like that. So I definitely have my experience coming up with that.
Okay.
And there is youth and age working in the vet hospital as well.
Just one other question. Are you planning on hopefully looking for a home in Halifax or nearby?
Plymouth County, so somewhere local.
That's a big, huge one.
Our plan is to find something very close to his father's house, which is the one in Halifax, so, you know, somewhere in the area. We've kind of been looking, but we're not looking yet. We'll go for the next year. We're gonna stay, kind of stay in harmony for at least a year before we purchase something, whether it be in Halifax or through Florida or Los Angeles.
You're available to start soon, if that would be the case?
Yep.
Chief, do you have any questions? No problem. Do you currently have a license? I'm sorry, your son is in the act.
No, I plan on getting one. We've kind of realized that we appear to have a long list of appointments for the RFP, so we're kind of waiting. We both need to, we've switched all of our addresses, but we need to get our driver's license in Massachusetts.
That should be a problem.
Yeah.
And so one of the things, the act is your position is to attend the academy. Is one of the requirements, let's say, 96th Avenue Academy, comes for 12 weeks. Correctly, because of the COVID, obviously, not many, I even own a daycare. But I didn't mention you have your family to support for daycare. Usually runs on Friday for 12 weeks from my age of four. Would that be an issue?
Not at all. Very flexible, my childcare, which is probably the reason we didn't move here is, we've been struggling for 10 years. We're going to get my oldest, this, I'm going to be seven next week, and since we had our first challenge, it's been very hard working around childcare. So moving to Massachusetts for support because we have a full family support system, very healthy kids, it definitely makes working a lot easier with family, roster, children, versus daycare centers.
We mentioned that you work with, looking at canines and stuff, you know, wrestling. What type of work do you do, like can't be trained or just kind of what?
So the first one, I was directly with Sergeant Greg Spaly at the Rock, Connecticut. She was a canine officer. When I first started working with him, I cared for his working dogs and his special protection dogs, who went away after work and went on the office. I was the only person, not only that I trusted, but capable of handling his dogs and caring for them. And that's when I first really started working with the police officers with him. When I worked for Dr. Cosner, she provided all medical care, feed and remain to the police officers of Fairfield, Bridgeport, and Westport, to be careful of their dogs. And I worked with her.
Thank you.
Charlie, do you have any more?
No, I do not.
Anybody else?
Do you have any questions about some of the jobs that we have?
I definitely understand the job duties and the academy, and I'm very happy to do that. My question is, I know it's, first time, I think it says 18 hours, and I go in all controls to the, on a call, so like more or less for the position, like what those hours are, like as far as schedules, I haven't had an understanding.
Yeah, we started to talk about that a little bit.
Yeah, so basically, what I'm supposed to do is, is work whoever would be hired. That's the sort of structure on schedule, very flexible. So if you tell me that, you know, this week, I have to work Monday, Wednesday, and Friday, a couple of hours, perhaps this is when you're on call. And so, if you're doing a couple of hours of three, three hours, then a few days, then keep the other hours in case, you have to work on the case, you have two separate hours. Obviously, if you're moving on to 18 hours for that week, then following week, you can't work up to the 18 hours. So it's no even so. And I think we did what in average for the last three years. And I think the, yeah, a lot of the time across, we had, she averaged just over 18 hours, so it works well. I just want a structured law. So if you're talking that, you know, next week, I have to do, you know, Wednesday and Thursday, that's fine, as long as I think you're coming in and you're in the schedule. So that's very flexible.
Okay.
But that's basically it. So you are, let's say, 18 hours. If, let's say, you work that 18 hours and then on Friday, we, you know, this is a dog day, and you have to work on it a couple of days, well, that's, that'd be more fun, right? Then we'll just, you know, just take those hours off, get on the other end, eventually, it all comes out.
Okay, that makes sense.
And you are okay with the investigator side of this?
Yes.
More personal?
Yes.
How, computer, what do you play with the computer? I obviously have an in-house system that, you know, we could hire to train on it, but how you work with Microsoft Word?
Yes, all of the basic systems. I can do pretty much any operating system as long as I'm taught, and I have very good boot.
Troy, did you got a question?
No.
Anything else for me?
I don't think so.
Guess we're good?
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you for coming on.
Just so everybody understands, I think what we're gonna do is, unless somebody has an objection, we're gonna do all the interviews tonight, and then we're gonna ask the chief for recommendation and probably make a decision on Thursday.
Okay.
Does that work for you?
It works.
I think that's reasonable. We have a chance to think about it on the chief's, so. You could keep the chief up to verify our information.
Right, exactly.
Just, just.
And if you have anything else for me, obviously, you could speak out.
Terrific, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Troy.
Well, almost, got a couple, three minutes.
Can we now, you need to first?
Can start doing the routine stuff if you want.
We can, we start with approval of the agenda. So we don't have an opportunity, but we have an app. Nothing here. Team motion?
So moved.
Second, all of them favor?
Aye.
Selectmen's minutes for April 7, July 2, July 30, 2020. You will have an opportunity?
I'll do it for a second.
All of them favor?
Aye.
And President, Chair, I affirm approval of the following warrants and commitments. Feeble warrant number 10 for $219,152.55. Vindication warrant number 11 for $159,592.6. Withholding warrant number 12 for $75,273.81. And ambulance commitment for 27.82, $2,039,365.53.
A second.
All of them favor?
Aye.
I move to affirm the following selectmen, Michael Gilman, for Brooks and the Trinces, DC, $1,630. Legal for July, attorney of the vehicle, legal for July, $1,265.63.
Second, all of them favor?
Aye. Pipe stand.
One session. I move to affirm approval of the following bill, Michael Gilman, as part of legal for July for $1,760.
Second.
All of them favor?
Aye.
I move to prove the following warrants and commitments. School warrant number 13 for $261,015.69. Vindication warrant number 14 for $101,287.50. Mobile park fees. Number eight for $5,160.
Second.
All of them favor?
Aye.
Back to the next segment. What have followed?
You want to start again?
Oh, sure, please. Just, I'm listed. Give me. You kidding me?
You're kidding.
My next candidate is Caitlin Brissy. Did I say that correctly?
That's it.
Caitlin, please tell us a little about yourself, your background, and why you're looking at this position?
Okay, I've been growing up with animals my whole life. My parents have bred and showed dogs, and I've shown dogs at all. I've been to a baby and training for my dogs. I've dealt with aggressive dogs. I've done horse step rides since I was little, I can't remember the age, but I went to Horse Nationals and owned and bred pigs. I've had a lot of different animals and I like to give a lot of service because I love animals and, and again, I hate to be done before, so thought this would be a great job for her.
Do you have the time for this job?
I do.
It's a little unstructured, you're trying to add a little structure to it, but that doesn't sound like it's a problem actually. You said you've dealt with aggressive dogs?
Yes.
Because that's typically, well, I think that's a full generalization, but that's still a part of the job.
Yes, I've been bitten by my own dog, due to my husband's abuse, and ended up having to make decisions for him to go, which no one likes to put their own dog down, but wants a danger to people and the community. That's what you have to do, especially with two kids. So, yeah, I've dealt with them. I've dealt with another dog, got it tried fighting, but didn't get me. But during shows too, you see a lot of dogs going at each other.
President, ask you one more question, so that's more on a little bit.
Troy has his question he likes to ask.
Did you have dealt with aggressive dogs? Have you dealt with aggressive owners?
Aggressive what?
Aggressive owners.
Yeah.
How do you deal with aggressive individuals?
How would I deal with them?
Aggressive individuals.
I'm trying to talk to them how we try to treat situations and, I mean, if anything, I don't have to call them off, I mean, if that's the case.
I ask that question because I've been sitting in this board a long time and I've seen owners. My belief is that it's the owner's fault, not the dog's fault. The dog wanted them, they punished them, whatever they were doing.
I'm gonna say, like, at first, when it was my own dog, I thought it was that person because, I mean, you love the dog. Everyone loves their dog, it becomes a, you're my number. And when I look back at it, after my use and everything that I went through, it was the right decision, to keep people safe. I mean, I get to the bottom of it all the time because they love the dog.
Have you ever had to deal with individuals, whether they be with horses or...
Uh, yes, I have to deal with few people that have, that don't love their horses and all.
I think. So, the job, the chief will talk about the hours, but do you have availability for scheduled time throughout the week?
Yeah, my kids are seven and nine, and I currently live in Halifax with my parents. My mom works at home, and my dad has a close schedule.
So, one of your requirements, you had a chance to meet the job requirement?
Yes, I was.
So one of the things is that you have to certify by the 10th Circuit Control Office Association. That entails 96th Avenue training, that's one to four weeks. So it's one day we create hours, it's up to schedule because of COVID, honestly. But we definitely have an issue with scheduling, you know, people away from one. And I think the training is like the right, the extreme field.
Okay.
So it'd be like, you know, the day out of schedule. So that's not an issue.
No.
And then the other thing is, so these jobs, 18 hours, obviously, what we're trying to do is, it's pretty flexible. So it's just a matter of working together and figuring out what works for you, that particularly, as long as I know that, you know, Monday, Wednesday, Thursday, one week, or Tuesday, Thursday are gonna be, you're coming in, you're four hours to do whatever you can do, wait for the dogs, respond to the minutes. And then if you're basically on call, so if, does that make sure like the...
No.
And so, if you work, let's say, 16 hours, that one week, you know, Friday, you get a call from a dog, like, it's gonna be a lengthy investigation, a couple of days. So what will happen is that week, you know, just work the hour between the work, and then the following week, we'll catch you back. So, the dog, I think it's like a three-year average, and it was like 17 and a half days and hours, 15 and a half hours a week. So it's right into that whole pot, like 18 hours. So, is there any questions you have for the board, specifically, with this job?
Where is the facility?
Right here at the station.
Oh, is it?
And you, you gotta go off, we in and out of the station. We have a camel bag, a pack, a lot, it's got like three stalls, that's what we, you know. We can't keep the dogs all night, they have to be transported to Lakeville.
Okay.
So we would just keep maintaining them there until they only gets in a mobile fire and special transport to Lakeville.
Anything else?
And when, where are you looking for, like, the person to stop?
The person to stop?
Yep.
Well, I would mention that we're gonna require you to get the decision by Thursday, so then the following week, and I would have to call and find out exactly when that academy is gonna run, and I'm gonna do a virtual one, so then, then you require you to stop from the academy, to do an house, maybe, I do computers, or it's basic. So, because we have an in-house program that we utilize, we're walking calls and reports, because obviously, the job tells, you know, justifying the court, justifying part of the void during the dogfight investigations, so definitely generating reports and all that, that's just training out.
And you did say you committed with the job requirements?
Yeah, I got that on my, I went on the Alpha, so, yep.
Got that on the doctor. Gentlemen, anything else? Job, you?
No, I don't.
If you have nothing else of us, the chief mentioned, what we're gonna do is we're gonna put this decision off until Thursday. We basically digest it, right? Not completely, and get the chief's recommendation, and we will have a decision on Thursday afternoon. We have a five-week, we told update meeting, we can do some business in this work.
Okay.
So we'll do it on Thursday.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So we've got a few minutes to your seven. I don't know if there's any other routine stuff.
This is like to move the equipment bill. Selectmen's expense account, $30 for check payable to a stamp. Annual dues. Law account. For, what's it, you guys?
Lexis, LexisNexis.
Yeah, it's just, I already, Lexis, 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 Lexis.
It's a monthly subscription for us to look up law information. We get it, we get it once a month.
LexisNexis, okay.
Yeah.
So $70. And from the insurance account, $573.46. I'm gonna make a page, my best.
A second.
All of them favor?
Aye.
And that's it, the real square?
As far as I know.
We'll move on to gentleman, and that needs...
Sure. Just moving ahead to number three. Pam's gonna send down the election warrants. These are the postings that go up for the September 1 state primary. The board needs to sign those until you can do that while I'm scrambling on here. Appointment of election workers, there's a list in the agenda. Appointments expire on July 22, 2021. I didn't know if the board had any questions about the election worker list.
The list is getting smaller and smaller.
Well, I asked Barbara whether she felt she needed more people, and at this point she didn't, because I know there's a number of places across the country are having shortages because of the number of elderly who mainly work elections, but don't feel comfortable doing so. But I did ask her specifically, so she's trying with the number that she has.
Do you need a motion for the list, or do you need me to read them off?
No, you know, they're on the agenda, that's fine.
Okay. I'd make a motion to approve the list of the election workers. Second.
All of them favor?
Aye.
Ambulance abatements for July 2020, $51,711.74.
Move, second.
All of them favor?
Aye.
On the issue of the helicopters in Cranberry Boggs that Jerry Fitzgerald was in to talk with you a couple of weeks ago, based on the location of Cranberry Boggs near Mr. Fitzgerald's home, I found the owner was Hardwood Real Estate and wrote to them. Derek Hardwood contacted me and I've given him and Mr. Fitzgerald each other's contact information and asked them to discuss the matter. So I don't know what, I'll hear back from either of them, we'll see, but at least the interested parties can talk about it and figure things out.
Cheryl has communicated with the board, and I did not get the person to satisfy them.
Well, we'll see. Proposed truck exclusion, Circuit Street and Laurel Street. Two residents had a concern about their own personal vehicles being excluded. However, the 5,000 pound weight limitation is for carrying capacity, not the weight of the actual vehicle. I guess there are some personal use trucks these days that weigh over 5,000. But I thought the board could take the language it's used before for other truck exclusions and then modify it, as I've shown in my notes down at the bottom of the paragraph, so that the exclusion would not pertain to vehicles owned by residents of these streets, meaning Circuit Street and Laurel Street. So, and I can't think of, you know, there are no businesses down there. I don't think we have complaints about businesses, so, you know, but they don't, the board doesn't have to vote on this tonight, the hearing is in two weeks. But I just wanted to bring the board up to date as to what I've got, feedback I've already gotten from residents and what the board could do as a modification. I'm gonna skip the recycling fees for right now because in a couple of minutes, you're gonna have a seven o'clock appointment, and that's gonna be extended conversation. I don't have any other notes on COVID and Plymouth Kears Act funding. On the additional special town meeting for September 12, the board had discussed holding another special town meeting on September 12 in order to have votes on one or more of the following issues. This would include the heating and air conditioning project at the town hall, which would include the Veterans Agent and the Great Hall. Additional money put into the unemployment account, dealing with issues that passed your lane, dealing with issues of traffic enforcement in terms of additional appropriation for that effort. Also zoning on abandoned properties. I need a go or no go from the board because we're running out of time to get the warrant properly posted and sent out. And if a go, which articles the board would want placed on the warrant?
You want that tonight?
Well, if the board wants to wait until Thursday, that's probably really the absolute last day because I need, you know, the warrants... last day, because I need, you know, the warrants need to be posted, I believe, two weeks in advance, um, which is easy to do, but we still need to have the warrant prepared, get to the printers and mail it out also. Well, Thursday's fine, if you're not, if you don't, if you still want to work on this.
I'd love to spend a little time with it.
Yeah, okay. Okay, I'll put that for Thursday. Um, at seven, I will get Mr. Sampson.
Um. Our next candidate is Michael Sampson. And welcome, thank you for your interest.
Thank you, Brad.
Um, could you tell us the move up, or we can help yourself, or help your background, and why you want this?
Yes, sir. So I'm Michael Sampson, as you guys know, thirty years old, currently in a law firm, Hanson Line, uh, married with a kid, twenty-three this next month. I'm currently a police department, a special officer, and I'm a sheriff department. Been in the office for five years, in the sheriff's department for four years now. I wanna be an ACO, says I work along with the attorney's going to go now, trying to work and work, but I like how it works, I like the job, uh, something different every day, unlike policing, usually deal with bad guys, dealing with animals, you know, all type of animals, type of calls, something different.
Have you, uh, had background with this?
Not animal control, but, uh, policing, perhaps a reserve academy, more of a police side of the animal control. I know you have to have, uh, for the animal control academy, it's a week or four weeks to find out how to do it. Um, but yeah, I'm interested in that.
So do you, you have any real experience with rest of the staff?
Uh, I mean, we have fantastic mission for your area. We have plenty of dog calls.
I'm sure you do.
Yeah, I can't even tell how many we have, loose dogs, unleashed dogs, dogs on the beach constantly. We have to enforce that at Brown. Yeah, I first, I didn't have an ACO, keeping it on till my second year, so who are the ones taking care of those calls?
Well, that's definitely in the past, and most of the times it's police officers.
Yeah, I understand the title, but actually busy calls, potential ACOs.
Many of those times don't have a full-time ACO.
Yeah, so our town, I'm, uh, he's control of, you know, well, accent call to try time. I'm not sure how you guys are, uh, doing here, but he's in charge every time.
And obviously you can't be in one place every time.
Yeah.
All right, did you familiarize yourself with the job requirements? Did have a chance to look at those.
Uh, somewhat, I'm not for sure too much of it, but that's, uh, you can kind of work for that actually, I wasn't really clear the situation, how it works, but I don't really know much of it.
Jim?
I don't wanna steal your.
No, don't worry.
So what, what would your availability be, um, during the week if, if we had calls?
Uh, so right now I'm currently working Thursday, and then all weekend on. And other days I just pick up, do the details, I don't have time to shift. So I will be, be flexible right now.
Okay.
Summertime, and then fall time, you can use the last hours, you see when the vision, but sometime hour will take the details Thursday.
Okay.
It's kind of flexible.
Okay.
I'm sorry, did you say you were special in time?
Yes, especially.
How do you, how do you deal with aggressive individuals?
What's that?
How do you deal with people who are aggressive?
Kind of like.
Especially their own dogs, or you go to pick a dog up, and there's some dogs on their face, how do you deal with that?
So how do I deal with someone with aggressive dog?
I'm talking about the owner too.
The owner? So address the situation first, see what problems, issues, address what is wrong with the situation, how to treat the dog or mistreat it, uh, go by that first, talk to the owner, address the situation, see if you can fix that situation, if not, and we're different theories, um, as well, different bylaws, uh, we can't, bylaws, I can get on a bylaw challenge.
Have you ever had to deal with anybody aggressive than at the sheriff department?
Yes, of course.
And resolutions to the situation?
Address the situation, I like to kind of talk to the inmate or the owner, I think, uh, maybe two hours, maybe one, that address is gonna totally consider your rights, so the crime, common suspicion that's all the time.
Just one last question, you have to answer this, because it's impersonal, but did you follow your time from the county's first?
And that's it.
Mike, what is your, uh, your, your ultimate goal, I mean, I don't even have a lot of unfortunate, uh, background and experience. Are you looking to get a job of full-time in office somewhere, or is that like your ultimate goal?
Everyone's goal is to look for a full-time. Yeah, this is, but right now, there's nothing out there. So right now, I'm just kind of looking anywhere for something else to do. I'm looking more to get the little act on this side. So there's some, some of that, but, uh, I mean, ultimate goal, probably kind of this is somewhere.
Are you in any applicants for this list room?
I'm currently in Brockman's, it's Thursday, I wasn't over, I moved to Brockman, so I don't have a public scene.
Oh, okay.
So, uh, I mean, full-time goal is, you know, have a good.
But it's, it's very, you know, especially these signs.
Yeah, it's tough.
Yeah, go ahead and add on to your, my question. Um, I know that, uh, and you mentioned that, that, uh, you go to the academy, which is run by the, um, draws the association matches. It's a, I believe, it's, it's not running right now, it's a whole weekend, obviously. Um, that'd be an issue with your schedule, because it's, you can see four weeks or a combination of, but, you know, it's still an extra hour. And in regards to, uh, feeling response, so you're especially in, in hallway, uh, I knew it's like guaranteed, uh, like, you know, schedule, like, if you, Wednesday, you are, or.
Yeah, so currently right now, it's a summer schedule, so we have seven shifts, seven hours, it's, uh, Thursday, Saturday, Sunday. And the fall is changing, but right now, in Texas, it's a video, obviously, uh, we're at all sets scheduled, so we're kind of playing them today.
All right, so, so, let's say, so you, you kind of, your response is kind of limited somewhat, sometimes, let's say, you know, you're working shifts, Saturday, Sunday, and you get a call for, for a bike, you have to kind of follow on and out, when you, when you, when you put it.
So ultimate goal is to get out of, oh.
Yeah, that's right.
Um, so that's not really, it's kind of, I'm trying to move on to other things, but.
Do you have any questions for us?
Uh, just like basically, you're expecting your hours, uh, how are you going to work this?
That's something the chief probably, uh, that's something you're trying to do there, that's a question, do something about hours.
Oh, the schedule, I, so, so basically, the, the job is, is advertised at eighteen hours, and we've been pretty circular, uh, in the last three years, the ACOs have been sitting in a half, eight and a half hours. Uh, so basically, uh, with the way it is structured, it'd be, again, you'd be able to be flexible, our schedule, but I would have to know, like, like, this is the chief, uh, thanks to you kind of working one day, you know, six hours, Wednesday, you know, four hours, whatever, and so that's something structured, and obviously, if you have to get an investigation, you gotta respond, those hours would be forced out to the next phase, you, you manage the hours, actually, you're on the investigation, that's your eighteen hours.
Four hours.
Yeah, like that, so right here, let's say, you, and if you have three shifts, uh, that, because you get, I, you have another bike, you're limited, it's a five minute.
Yeah, so the on-call situation.
You always want to call.
So, yes. So do you have a dog, I would say, you, you got a phone?
Yeah, it doesn't matter, the hours, whatever.
Right, okay, okay.
So, so basically, let, let's say you schedule for Monday, Monday was in Friday, but on Monday, um, you get a call for an hour for the dog, and you put in your eighteen hours then, and then Wednesday, Friday, you just kind of, okay, so you want to play with it.
Okay.
You have a question? If you could, that's good for me. Gentlemen, in the video? What, what we're planning on doing is we're here to assess all the interviews, um, have we, uh, treat a little bit for a recommendation, and we're gonna make a decision this Thursday. We have, uh, a regular scheduled interim kind of code thing, that we also do some business in the after of the day, twice a week, and Thursday's one of those days. So, uh, we will have a decision this Thursday.
Yeah, thank you. Mike, just one question, you guys have IAC, huh?
Yes, we have, IAC, which we, uh, see what is, give me, uh, if you're so, we can get a hold of the rest. I'm very excited about it.
Thank you.
I also, uh, drink, uh, sweet curries, berries, you know, the city bongers, just take a drink back in.
Did a good job.
Thank you, very grateful.
Thank you.
Well, if you don't have anything else, and we don't have anything else, like, because we have students, thank you very much.
Thank you very much for coming.
Thank everyone, thank you, but go, uh, that was, thank you, thank you.
Take care.
Chuck, see you later.
No, it's true. Tom, do you want to just move on for a minute?
Yeah, this is, this is.
Yeah, no, it's fine, yeah.
This time, all right.
Because you're gonna take the mask off now, honey.
Sure.
Okay, I didn't want to be disrespectful.
No, it's, if we had eleven people here, we'd all have to be wearing masks, at ten, we're still fine.
Perfect, perfect.
Uh, thank you for coming, thank you for applying. Uh, could you start off by telling us a little bit about yourself, your background, and, uh, why you want this job?
Well, um, it's a unique situation. Your residents had reached out to me, and, um, I already have your time, um, because I'm with me in Abington, um, my partner and I, Joe Kenny, we worked with him in Abington for three years, and we're, he's nice and nice, but because of him being half my age and having a life, he uses me a lot. Um, and there's a lot that goes on during the day, but in the past, um, I don't want to be inaccurate, so somewhere between eight and ten months, maybe, maybe a year, I, I don't think it's been about that. We've also been covered by Hanson, because he gets a stipend from Hanson. Um, and then, like, last week, you had a residence, um, on Ocean, uh, down by Long Pond City, that had an injured stomach, um, unfortunately, it was dying, and the resident needed it removed. Um, normal ACOs don't do those things a lot of times, but we do, and we pride ourselves in that, so Joe was eking up, and he said, Laura, you gotta go to Halifax, and I went, okay, and I got the call, um, and I got that animal, and I was able to help you. And, um, and then, sure as shoot, the next day, an eighty-year-old woman reached out to me through Facebook Messenger, her neighbor, because I guess you have a lot of foxes in your area, probably where you're more woods than within, we have quite a few, and foxes were getting with chickens, and because she's eighty, she's a little overwhelmed, and normally ACOs don't rehome chickens, but for an eighty-year-old woman who's asking for help, we did. And I have four of your Halifax chickens, and the other ones went to a nice farm. So basically, I had, I had reached out to my time, because where Joe and I have been covering without ever missing a call in three years, we, um, we're both extremely passionate about what we do, so we never work a day, and this job is something, uh, that requires you to work every day twenty-four seven, three sixty-five days a year, because you never know when something might happen. Um, so I said to the town, my town administrator, Frank Lynn, and I said, you know, Frank, I think it'd be good if you did a three-time deal again for the regional, because you got two offices that you can depend on now, you're already covering the places, but then, um, he didn't get back to me. So I did what your residents requested, and I, I went to apply, and lovely woman at the slots news office I dealt with. And then my town manager called me back, and he said, Laura, so I haven't reached out to you in weeks, and budget schedule and such, but yes, I would want to put together a regional deal and, and maybe see if the other towns would, because it's not up to anyone, and it's certainly not up to me and Joe. So I called back your lady, and I said, not gonna apply for your job, because I, I'm not in it to be a like guy. I don't do anything for the money, you don't, this town, that town, all towns together don't pay me enough to even still do the job. I do it because I love it and because I want to be the best help I can be, and I have a lot of strong suits in that, because I did highest care for many years. So I come on the scene, and no offense against officers, because I have great respect, and I am one, but I come on the scene as an officer with many, many eyes, and I help a lot of people that have been overcome by forty. Um, my case is two hundred and fifty-three animals, and we're, we've never even seen such a, a case as this, and I'm, by the grace of God, not by me, or even I did, but just by having the right people, they're rebuilding, I have three people rebuilding this gentleman's home over two years. So that's why a lot of residences want us to help, because we use the law when people like, you know, know you're not coming on my property, or, oh, I don't have to do that, or certainly when mental illness is involved, and we need, um, other things, I tend to see more, and I want to help more. But your lady wouldn't let me say no, and so what I told her is that I would come, and I will tell you that maybe you all know Frank personally, and maybe you could do a whole regional thing, it could, maybe every town could pay such little money, like a few pennies, and have actually four high ACOs with benefits, things that we don't care of. But that's obviously beyond my pay script. So I had told her that I would come into you, I would tell you that I had helped you, I'm already helping you. Animal control is on something like an officer and fire department, you can't keep track of what they're doing, they're gone every other second. I wouldn't sit all day long and do nothing, and then I might at midnight have two German Shepherds attacking an officer. You never know, so you have to be available. So at almost fifty-four, with three grandchildren and three kids feeling thirty to ten, I'm always home, so it's, it's good for me. But if you don't hire me, and if I didn't apply, this is what I told her, Joe and I do mutual aid for free, it's a part of what animal control does, and if you're, uh, say you don't find the right candidate, or if it takes your little time, or even if you do, and your town set up is summer, you don't have days and nights available, you can always reach out to us, and we will help your town, um, mutual aid anytime.
Thank you. Uh, I could regionalize away now, so.
I think so, I, I know, I live in a dream world, that maybe I'll see some.
Appreciate, but certainly not right now, I could just need somebody.
Sure.
Are you, did you familiarize yourself, did you have a script, or?
I know the job, I've been helping Bob Hammond, you may not have known him, but I helped Bob Hammond in my town, his nephew is my best friend since tenth grade, since I was thirteen. So, and I've done the job of ACO and graduated the academy, um, and know the job very well.
That's helpful. Anybody have a question?
No, I'm sorry, I, I, because you've discovered all my questions.
Yeah, I know, she's covered pretty much.
And I love, I say asthma, and I talk too long.
It's all good, it's all good. Um, you have, I can, some fashion you have availability.
Yes.
Here and there. I guess probably, uh, talking to the chief would be probably the next best thing to do here.
It is the chief, I, good thing you have some issue, same.
Um, question I have, so you're the full-time, how?
I'm the primary animal control officer with me, seven AM to five PM, and every other weekend, seven AM to five PM on that Monday, and my partner.
Just answer the question.
He's, he's, he uses my. He's, he's in the area is my partner since Mary Drake, um, has vacated. Um, and they paid him straight then. There's no contract involved, that's why the regional discussion has come up. Um, Joe works, Joe Kenny, um, my, my, um, partner, he, I requested him as my partner. Mary used to be my partner, we'll just leave it at that. And so I requested Joe as a partner, the selectmen, um, made that happen. And, um, you know, like, and he lives in town of Abington, so he was already the Abington. And Joe and I have worked out for three years together with Witten and he pays me out of pocket. He's been, they have a lot of changes in Abington and Hanson, as well as Witten, Frank is retiring. Um, so we've just been established for, there's been a lot of budget things and Joe and I are not comfortable. Um, so we just kind of sat and said, when the time is right, because we're gonna be here, Joe and I are, I'm really liking Abington, Dorsen. And Hanson is, and we work with Hanson, it's kind of the same town. And I got about five relatives that live in this town and my dearest friend that lives in Plimpton. So I'm always kind of here, doesn't seem far. It would be further for Joe, and this is not appropriate, because I wouldn't want you to go on this. But my partner said to Laura, you go for it, because I will, I will constantly have your view. There are times like in the spring or the fall, that you might got multiple animal calls. We do want to lay calls if we can. So if we didn't, I wouldn't be able to tell you, we probably never have a call. But we do that, because it's a great expense to the residents if you don't. And sometimes it's a very simple thing.
Oh, yeah, maybe it's a, a problem people.
Exactly. And I want to go out and see if we're recording a law, if we rescue the animal. But if the town pass on the property, but it's sick, it's only gonna be better for everybody and the professional. But then my town, I don't know if you know Brian was Hanson, um, but he's one of our selectmen. And I, he's my dear friend.
So will you?
I did, which is my dear friend too. He's my neighbor my whole life as well. But, um, but Brian and his wife and Dan and his wife, they're my friends and they're also selecting for a long time. And I told them my concerns, I said, look, you know what, like rebuilding a home and rebuilding a life for another woman and her animals. And I said, you know, I really am passionate, so I want to be able to serve the communities. And they looked at me, laughed and said, Laura, you would be able to do it with your eyes closed. And even if you went there and you were late, at least you showed up. But I, if you have somebody really wonderful, then I have a great job and I love my job. But the residents asked me to come.
I understand, and, and, uh, very familiar.
And I, and that makes me very proud, because all of our people are the same. Hanson, that doesn't matter, however lucky or whatever, we just want someone to help us.
No, I, I, I really appreciate that. Well, our, I haven't been to one before. She worked pretty well with, uh, one of the young ladies from Goodwater, it's Goodwater.
Yeah.
She, they, they helped each other out. So obviously, small towns, the resources, and then they help each other out.
Exactly.
Uh, you're, I don't know, what's this computer system you guys choose?
We don't, and that's a great question. Frank is trying to put one together as we speak. It was supposed to be done day one when the asylum started three years ago, then under recorded health, then under the selectmen, and then of course, project. So now we're supposed to get some kind of a system that he's working on.
Some, uh, like you're flying and stuff.
Paperwork.
Paperwork.
Yeah. Things from the academy, like a daily activity blog, a daily, um, you know.
Right, you guys do that, right.
Yeah, that type of thing. But we're trying to really see click this big system. But that gets sent, uh, see for the fix, you might call it a different name. It's if a town resident sees dead something along, and they type in or open a file or something like that. Then it comes forward to the 1-5-2-2, which of course comes forward then back home. It might be a month later or a day later, so we're trying to get something better.
So maybe if you did the academy, you're also.
Yes, we have yearly, uh, credits that every ACO needs to achieve. And Frank, and you can call him up, or you can call Dan or Brian. Frank left that paperwork for Joe and I on his desk for five months. So we have the, we have these credits to make up online, but the academy, uh, Frank paid for.
Clearly you have credentials, so I don't want to take up too much of your time.
And I don't want to take up yours, I'm a, I'm a, a Italian.
Oh, great, you're telling us the best.
Oh, there you go.
Not that bad.
Right.
Some test they were bad in the Italians.
Well, us, us Italians are lots of coping, we, how can we cook and feed people? I don't know what to do.
At least we don't talk about meat.
Right.
Anyway, thank you very.
You're so welcome.
What we're going to do is we're gonna kind of review all this.
Yeah.
Kind of lean on the chief's recommendation a little bit, uh, for a lot. And, uh, we have a meeting on Thursday scheduled this week. Uh, we're gonna include this in our weekly COVID update meeting.
Sure.
So we can make a decision on Thursday. And I want to thank you very much for.
You're so welcome.
Yes, sir, and, uh.
And I want to thank you, because this was kind of nice to have been, you know, if I don't want to put like it gives you a, like a big head or anything, but it's very nice to come to another town and to feel appreciated and wanted. But I really want to reiterate that Joe and I will help you guys anytime. Uh, the town pays us, so, uh, it's a mutual aid call for you if you ever need it, day or night.
Certainly, thank you very much.
You're very, very welcome. And please forgive me, there's too much to dress up.
Well, you should be, you should be more upbeat when you're doing this.
My grandfather died in my arms or passed over in our living room, where he lived forever, at 99 years old and four months. And he smiled every day and he said, don't let anybody bother you or bring you down. If he could make it to 99, that's what I'm gonna do. 2020 has been a little challenging, but he lived through the depression, so I'll be all sad. But there was still very much on my mind. It was very nice to meet you.
You're welcome.
Oh, jeez, you're welcome. Laura, I'm not very much money in here, but you wouldn't have got far. I appreciate that. Very much so, Gary, and thank you for all you've done.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I appreciate you.
Tom, I don't, I mean, I don't know if Alan is here for the rest of the evening, but I know he had some information about 163 Plymouth Street that he's been sharing with me. This is the problem property down on the, near the Plimpton line that we're trying to get cleaned up. Um, did you want to speak to it or?
Absolutely. Have you started any conversation?
No.
Okay. Um, as you know, 163 Plymouth Street, there's the water, debris, stuff in the front yard. Um, as the board came down and did some inspection, we found that it had some hazardous materials, waste, spoils, thinness. Um, we reached out, found out the Fanning Mae is the owner of the property. Um, the town had sent out Fanning Mae and noticed we gotta get registered, but the state government made COVID. Um, that didn't get me there. I did speak with someone personally at Fanning Mae. Um, they referred me to the, to a local real estate agency down in Plymouth that was handling all their vocal properties. Fortunately, the girl that was handling it was sick, she was out, so it got lost in the shop. Um, we, in my contacts with them, Fanning Mae agreed that whatever hazardous type of materials that they would be good right away. Um, one of the problems we had is we had a tenant that's in the property. Um, today, I don't know who that individual is. I know that we've had some police involved with it, because we need police officers who we go on site. Um, gentleman's kind of very diligent and very direct.
Is, is he actually renting from Fanning Mae?
No. Fanning Mae has no idea who it is, how we got there. He's kind of had no idea that all this debris that's needed. The, I'm making myself.
Um, Alan, just if you can hold on for a minute, we're gonna run into a problem on the 12 rule. So I'm gonna talk to the folks out here for a minute.
Okay. I'm gonna, excuse myself for a minute.
Okay. So if you can take a minute.
Do you need to reset the menu?
Yeah.
Need a prime mask? Do we have to prime mask?
So Charlie, do we need a mask up?
Uh, not right up, it's not dependent. If we weren't, without them, I'm coming back for a sec.
Okay.
We're technically allowed, I wasn't making trouble.
No, you don't, you don't need it yet, don't worry. So I'm sorry, Alan, if you're wondering.
Uh, so team one, we don't know who was in there, Fanning Mae did not know who was in there. Um, we're trying to make that determination. I did speak with, we stepped back, we're sorry. We did contact, did have contact with the gentleman who was looking at, health agent. Um, he called into the office, um, told my concerns, um, we scheduled an appointment. Um, followed up Wednesday, walked there and meet us, uh, we showed up, the gentleman was gone. But he at least removed the stains, spoils, uh, and marble products. We still have an abundance of trash, uh, and a couple boats, uh, this one pulled back, it's two million water. We don't propose on it, so we don't want there two million water. Reached out to the real estate company, they came to the site with a couple of police officers, um, saw the conditions. But the problem we have right now, if we don't remove the gentleman's, Fanning Mae is under the impression that if there is a tenant in there, then he's gonna have to be evicted. And the eviction process is.
Uncomfortable because.
It's not even comfortable.
Right.
Moratorium on the process. We, we did find that the facility, uh, that the water had supposedly been shut off. The water had been shut off. Um, I personally, good Mr. Gentleman, watering plants all front. Um, water pump went down, tried to verify whether the line of water was going in. We found that the meter had been cut, so the connection to the meter had been cut. So they couldn't make any connection to the meter. We verified that the line was shut off, we handed. We give the board health, uh, last Tuesday, determine that the house will be uninhabitable, because it doesn't have the water. And that's the process we've taken now. Um, I spoke with the real estate agency again this afternoon, and they're gonna get back to me in the morning, um, try to come up with some course of action. They're not responsible at this point to recreate, because we don't know what the rules are. So we're in a situation now where we're gonna have to just try to work through the whole process. If the gentleman that's in there decides to move the debris, um, then we'll get a defense. We're, Fanning Mae will have instituted some sort of legal action.
Do we have any idea if this person has, uh, his association is with the property? Is he just randomly there?
I have no, no idea. Um, my first day, I actually talked to the owner. And then we did a research, found the owner back three years before.
Yes.
Um, so I, I don't even know the gentleman's name. He's called, he's called board health office and he's called various offices. He doesn't need his name.
Is the property boarded up, is that the?
No, it's not boarded up.
So it's not the house I'm thinking of, though?
No, 46, 28, 28 Plymouth Street is the land.
That's boarded up?
Poured. This is on the pond.
So if you're going towards Plimpton.
Yeah.
So you'll be on the left-hand side, there's a bunch of woods, the cemetery, and then boom, you see all the boats and everything else out front.
It's like on the cliff, it's on the edge, just past the cemetery.
If you Google it, it looks like a very nice house.
Yes.
It's very nice house. Um, I, I had a shape of it, it's 2018, I had never noticed it, and I did get on it. Um, so, so it's kind of a little appleish and we're just gonna, just trying to work on a solution. Um, Fanning Mae, I've heard, wants to, I'm gonna say, I have a pocket, we're gonna end up with a brick wall. And they have authorized the, the real estate agents to, um, clean up anything that has happened.
Especially with this proximity to the pond.
It's, we're now 125 acres, right?
Alan, is there anything that the board can do to help out? Do you need assistance from town council? I don't know if there's anything the police department can do, not in terms of evicting the person, but at least getting more information or anything else to help you?
The, at some point, we have a need gentleman's name, but it is, I'm anticipating that Thursday or Friday that we add on a placard episode, which means that technically we can. Um, there's a little bit of authority issue, the ways for health have the, the ability to try to move along with police. There's a very fine line, um, especially in this environment. What I'd ask the real estate company to do is once we placard it, if, especially if we know who's there, if they want to work it out, then I think we have another scenario if they tear down a recording. Of course, it would be malicious discussion. So I know there's been some police interaction with the gentleman, beyond that, I don't know.
Yeah, I did a double check, I think we have, well, identity. Uh, I know that, uh, the officer's Monday once went down, uh, on a weekend, that's when he was kind of diligent. They returned, uh, there the second time, and we got to check the water, that he was better there, and then.
He didn't.
Oh, yeah, yeah, and then the third time, uh, one, one of the officers contacted, uh, the government police to come in, went, went, uh, visiting the listings on the boat, and we, um, we've gone and put the gas there. So, uh, but, uh, so I had a little double check to get his information now for, for the board healthy. Um, but at this point, from a police aspect, he, you know, calls waters rights thing. So I think if we work together with the, uh, the Fanning Mae and local real estate agency, I think it's, we're better off going that way.
And that's supposed to actually, I think, my board would say, come on, try to resolve it. If he leaves, then they won't get it right.
Just, just to know, folks, we do have 12 people in the room, we need to have masks on per state order.
Just had a question. So was the water bill not paid?
No, the water, the water bill is not paid, the water had been shut off. Been shut off, it was an official shut off, um, by year ago. But I did see it had water there, um, usually, but when the water pump went down, when the water pump went down, he told me he had well, and there's no way that it's been shut off. I'm gonna say that if he does have well there, we're not aware of it, and he can prove to the water that he has water, um, and unfortunately, I, uh, would have to do it.
It appears that the gentleman, and again, our, this will be true, goes in Queens or some sort of movie or a famous song that has, I think that's the connection there, but it's not something.
Well, I guess, is there, is there electricity still and?
Yes, there's electricity, ignition.
So is this, other than the, other than the water bill, if you turn the water on, the town's not involved, right?
Well, other than the trash problem, yeah.
Okay.
I mean, that's been, that's been the complaint that we've received from a number of residents, is it's an eyesore at this point. Well, you know, hazardous materials, but just general garbage is there.
If he was just living there, it would be a simple thing. He's doing Fanning Mae, he's doing.
Okay. Okay, um, so I guess, sorry, go.
I was, I was curious why it would be unfortunate, um, if they turned off that they could turn water and spray it out. Why would that be unfortunate?
Because if you continue to keep the trash there, then you would have less ability to try and do something. to try and do something.
Well, then would we have a may problem, right?
Well, no, it's also the town, because the town has a bylaw concerning the accumulation of trash and debris on the property. And people are registering complaints with the town about that, and about the violation of the bylaw.
Did it ask any more? We got it.
Do you have any water files?
Um, I know we have extended a lot of pictures, but we always go over there.
Pretty easy to see, we have a lot of All right, can I keep the update? Keep it posted?
Yes.
Okay, so we've got 7:40, we've got, I believe, both of you are here for that, so we're still good. Adrian and Michelle, yes, great. So if you wanna take one of your seats and come up, you know, there's a seat up here, and you can talk a little bit more closer to the board selectmen. Adrian Barclay and Michelle Barclay are here to discuss being appointed to the beautification committee. Kristen Wawston had contacted Pam earlier today, she was also going to be coming in, and I guess she had a conflict, and maybe, and it'll be up to the board whether they want to make an, you know, when they make appointments, whether they want to appoint all three individuals, or wait for another meeting for Ms. Wawston to come in.
Okay, uh, we'll decide that, do we have any idea? That isn't
No.
Okay. I didn't know.
I'm gonna step out, because we're at 13 now.
Okay. Adrian? Time I get to do the most appropriate ways. This is something you'd both like to do, after for this?
I guess I know, you know about patrol.
How many people are on the committee now?
We've got, we'll read you a lot.
I didn't see that in the other side of the committee hall.
And we had a letter from off of the Zinsky, it's all pretty good, okay. I did ask him for this, of course, and just noted to him that this is for the following year, 22, not 21.
Very powerful, so he's not on, and Nancy, but, and she has to come off. So with Adrian and Michelle, and then Kristen Wawston, who couldn't come, that would make uh
Okay. Over, have you guys met with them previously?
I can't.
Did you meet with the Barclay, Big Sleet on it?
I'm sorry.
Have you sat down and talked with them a lot?
We emailed that one, for what, they didn't try a lot, so we didn't do a kitchen meeting, so not for us, but not all.
Is it, is it fair to say that you would recommend this apartment?
Yes.
That makes it easier for us.
So they could have been on, and
If you have the time, and you have the ability, and you're not a full-time job owner, it would be something to answer.
Yeah, we both work tomorrow, and have schedules, and really the same door, and planning to help with the thing.
Terrific, terrific. You should step and poll.
The only question I had, are you both registered voters?
Yes.
Okay, then, sir.
You good to a town meeting?
Oh, we're not good to a town meeting, we plan on attending, unless it's postponed because of COVID-19.
We're gonna take care of postponing that again tonight.
We're sort of, we've been in town for two years, and then I'm on the sick for a while, so we didn't get a chance to attend any, but we can.
I would move there, um, Adrian Barclay and Michelle Barclay.
Can we get a second?
A second, that, did, did the chair recommend Kristen Wawston too?
Uh, I did, yes. We, I just heard her today, I guess it was a mix-up, she couldn't come, so she did email Pam, that's the possibility for next meeting, she did come on the point of
So if you're all good with it, we can just include that in, Troy, if you want to win your motion.
I'll amend my vote, I also have Christine Wawston.
A second call?
Okay, almost a bit.
Hi. Thank you, guys. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck. We've picked a lot of media around town.
Are you, you can leave that one.
Okay, so we got five minutes until your next appointment. Wait. Let's see, where are we here? So in fact, speaking of town meeting recess, Dennis Carmen's already done the recess order. It, usually done it before, through the board selectmen's meeting, but it is not legally necessary that he attend the meeting to do that. So he's recessed it again to Saturday, September 12th at 9:00 AM. I think the intent, having talked to the finance committee last night, is that we try as hard as we can to go with that date. That will allow us to get a budget approved, that will allow us to then be able to have the tax rate hearing, get bills out on time, not do estimated bills, and
Yeah, that's important.
As normal as we can get, yeah.
What, what time did you say?
9:00 AM.
Any other comments on this?
I'm hoping that the state can do the due diligence and do go to budget, so we can have a town meeting, and try to get back to some
Excuse me, it was ironic, we were talking about it that day, afternoon, and
The, just, so the board to where Silver Lake's budget was approved by Kingston, so
Right, so we're gonna, we're required to fund our assessment at the old March budget level. Which, I mean, you know, it's gonna take a nick out of what we have, but it's not going to affect things materially.
I just had a question on the aspect of the budget, where the minimum contribution numbers changed? Are we gonna have the same issue that Kingston Plimpton had four or five years ago, the hundred thousand dollar change?
So I guess the part, it's probably gonna have to go back up to DSS and DLS to say, okay, you gave us minimum contribution numbers to calculate the budget in March. You may change those numbers. Or are you not going to change those numbers? In a sense of, if you do change the numbers, what do we do about assessments? Obviously, if they don't change the numbers, the assessments are what they are. So I guess that's a good question to ask them.
Yes.
Thank you, Charlie.
Sure. Can we do one thing more? On the universal town email project, I did talk to Caesar, it's logistically, it's possible, obviously it'll take some time to get everybody on, and we're gonna have to buy additional licenses for backup and such, but logistically, it's possible. I talked to Attorney Mail about it, he's recommending that, obviously, his permanent employees, but also temporary employees, be given an email address along with board committee members. He does now recommend that professional service providers, such as attorneys, engineers, or third-party consultants receive an email. And so if the board would like, I'll just, you know, after tonight, I'll contact Caesar and start the ball rolling on what's necessary.
I think it's a good idea that all employees will be emailed on this, it's a way to try and, it's happening, I think that's a great
Do you want to motion for that?
Yes, please.
Alright, so I would move that the town provides email addresses for permanent employees and temporary employees, along with board and committee members.
One hundred, I'm sorry, $27.25. So if the town makes the decision that it does not want to develop that, just sell it, and very likely to one of the abutters, we're obviously not going to get that much money for it. And in addition, we'll have paid for the demolition. You know, I know the board discussed this a couple weeks ago, Gordon mentioned the idea that we're trying to reduce the number of substandard lots, I'm just saying, I'm not saying I disagree or agree with the policy, it does have a financial implication if we go that direction.
The whole original goal of zoning act was to eliminate home performance. And what happens is, is over the years, it hasn't been practical for ever, because it really kind of limits people to what they can do. To the point where United is supposed to improve their property, it's impractical in most initial, I think we have a big problem in this, because if anything comes closely to being in a vacant property, it would be dispossessing. And clearly, we have issues with vacant properties, unless we have a bylaw change, I don't think we can do that.
No, I don't think so either. I mean, you know, Rob can probably go out on a limb about intent, but the taxes weren't paid, people aren't living there, there's no use, there's no intent to use. So, and then, you know, as it is, you all are asking that the building be demolished, which would even eliminate the physical structure. So, you know, given Rob's current opinion, he would not, if someone came back in and applied for a building permit on, as that by itself, it would be a no. And we don't have any allowance in the bylaw to resume an abandoned use under those circumstances.
Yeah, I, I totally agree, nothing's gonna be, even if there was an electric, it's not gonna be a ten. So I, I don't think we have much of an option, other than to continue boarding out a new building there, eyesore, potential
Well, I'll get the, I'll get, well, we're paying for the insurance, mind you, because it's an abandoned property with a building on it. I'm gonna get, you know, as we can, as I can, get the RFP together, we'll get a demolition cost, and the town can make a decision whether to do something or not in that direction.
You hear the United, this is, if we were to launch, do we have a blanket policy for all town and properties to live with?
It's, it's overhe, well, the, how to put it? For properties that don't have buildings on them, yes. It would not, it would not be, because we have other, we have plenty of other lots that the town owns, yeah, yeah, right, yeah, right. Once we get the building gone, yeah, yeah. Okay, so we've got five, six, seven, eight, nine, I don't know anymore. Tom, I don't, she has her hand up on her
Oh, sorry.
Um, that's right, will the town answer that?
That's
Yeah, it's also both of them.
Yes.
So if I step out, four people can come in, masks go back on again.
Masks go back off or on?
If you need Steve for any reason, he's outside, putting my truck down, so we know the streets are open, so we're supposed to have Steve in. Okay, so, but he's available for you.
Okay. Steve Haywood? Charlie, Steve Haywood?
Yeah, yeah.
This is concerning, similar to
Yes, I'm working great, and I'm going on time, all of a sudden.
So you, I remember
So I've got handles about what I'm doing. It's gonna help all people possibly get lost, and I'm very busy here, so I got and I'll see what I've got. My project is, it all goes well, and I should be done before winter. And the board will go in
Twenty-five people in the restaurant for the event, or 50 outdoors at the restaurant.
Should we send Big Side Hiller an update?
I believe, Pam, did you send this out to anybody? This was a state, this is from the ABCC?
Um, I didn't send it out.
Okay, yeah, we'll get it out to everybody.
Send it to the license, then I turn around and send it out to all, but they didn't wait, they did.
Okay, we'll, we'll make sure
Mr. Haywood's gonna maintain the man, he's gonna put updates in for various things he does, I don't know why he's gonna put updates in. I'm gonna make a nice map for it there, and so like have each section laid out in that map, so you go to the marker board, find it, and then find the section sign, you go over there.
What type of material are you making the sign out of?
Well, I'm making a sign out, I'm making them out, like, you know those signs, like the handicap parking signs? It's gonna be just like that, it's a little U-channel post, and a nice reflective sign, and it's gonna, it's gonna, just like that, it's reflected, it's not gonna be, it's gonna look a lot better, obviously, when
I guess my question would be, what type of material are you using, plastic, metal?
And then, for your directory, is that a directory that you're gonna? What, what is your enclosed unit that you're gonna try to do here?
That's it, it's right there, you see, there's a little lock and
Right, I think Troy was asking about what these signs, so these signs are
Section signs.
Out, out in the graveyard?
Little posts, they're gonna be to help people find them. That's the big map, to give everyone a basis.
Okay.
And know where to find them. I, I think this is a great project. Because the town has so many projects, it's getting hard to come up with I'm trying.
This is a good one.
That's a great idea, so it's a great
It's a good one.
It is, it is a very good idea, and I assume Steve's on board, we
Oh, yes, that one, with the man
We can get him, maybe we can get him in the doorway and say, yeah.
So, um, with the directory here, you're gonna be able to tie in online? To give it, to give the town an update online, too? Like, would you be able to, what, the, the information that you post here, would you be able to post that, send that to us, so we can post it online, too, when you click on the cemetery, that you can click on that?
Yeah, I can send you guys a PDF of the map before I have it printed, and I'll be right there for you guys.
That would be cool.
Yeah, there's a real good app on website.
Yeah.
What's a website?
It's a big map, you can just scroll through, until you get to the end.
I, I, again, I
I think it's a courageous effort, you all to do that. The Eagle Scouts have made this town a really, probably a life really great, with you guys doing the projects, and I applaud you.
It's a lot of them, and he's pushed a lot
Well, we don't count him.
You don't even count me, but you gotta be all for it, so But no, no, all I credit to you, and it's a great idea, and I'm, I can just tell, we execute this, as no doubt. Terrific.
I would move that you're allowed to go forward, along with Steve Hayward, the highway should be a cemetery, make it so
How long is that behind, he's done excellent work.
A second.
Yep, almost a bit.
Alright, thank you.
Good luck, let's do it.
I need signature, so
I'll look forward to finding
You should start with Tom, he's the chair.
Here's your whole second, I'll be there.
Yeah. It'll be right there. And there's gonna be one on the table.
So what number are you up to now?
We're 221, in 10 years.
That's awesome.
I've seen more than that.
Shouldn't it?
I've seen more than that.
I didn't hear that, I got some news, you know, you know that. But I'm not going anywhere, Mr. Russell's
Did he hear that, Cory? He said he's not going anywhere, then he immediately shifts to you.
And I'm gonna tell the Eagles, he's taking off the turf. I'm pretty like Alton.
I think the first ones I went to was the Campbell's.
Absolutely.
Would Mr. Everface, please, have a last minute?
Yep, sure. Alright, it's fine. Is that? Yeah, that's, that's all I need.
Whoops, you don't need that one.
No, I, I didn't keep that one.
Okay.
Okay.
That's the lobby.
Thank you. I feel for you.
Good luck.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
See if you guys can.
Uh, probably not on camera.
Probably not, all right.
Congratulations for Friday night, by the way. I was there Friday night.
Yeah, it was awesome. Yep, so we just, a lot of stuff on the, all the Eagle projects finishing up. Congratulations for the past progress. We just finished the picnic table for the day today.
Awesome.
So, yeah, it's two down that, so we got like three more back there to wrap up.
When do you guys rest? When do you take a rest?
I can buy one now. How's easy pages, young people? Kids first.
Call honey going to do this.
That's it. That'll be down there, right? Absolutely. Well, guys, thank you so much. Goodbye. Thank you.
Thank you.
You know, I was saying, if you just refer to us simply, simply, simply.
Is that?
If you just refer to us simply, simply.
Simoes are, yeah.
He's kind of nice to answer.
He doesn't have a little piece signed, and then that big one, one of the, one of the people that are front and then one on the back.
Okay.
Good. Well, that's why I see the whole map.
Steve, what else? I'm very curious also, to know when we're closest to the spot.
Steve, you want to do the introduction?
This is Cody from Green Seal. We're on Sixth Street.
So, and Green Seal's the engineering firm that Steve has been using on a number of projects. I think you're working on the Pine Street Bridge, for instance?
They set that up today.
Okay, well. But, and Steve's had an association with them now for a couple of years. So they're not, they know where Halifax is, they're not just coming here and trying to find it versus Hanson.
One of the five people in the neighborhood.
That's the first question again, I never think it's going back. I heard that.
All right, so time for me. About a year ago, Steve came to you with a letter of intent for the Complete Streets Program. To reach out to Complete Streets is funded through COT. And the intention is, it sounds like changing to make their streets more friendly to pedestrians, bicyclists, people walking, people walking and abilities, basically economic status. And the goal is really to make sure that these streets are starting to adapt to some products. But for people who want to walk from their house to the reached out establishments, people who want to go for a bike ride. It also helps provide some trail walking, so there's, I know there's some trails in the town. This could help. So, maybe make trails if there are areas that could use support. Southern classes. And it's a really good program. Steve and I are training people on that plan. Where we sort of, we're successfully managing situations where there are some intersections where there are a lot of either car and park rations, bicycle pedestrians, and hits and fatalities and how to, because we're second and fourth in that. So what we're doing right now is, we have signed a letter of intent, or we will also sign a letter of intent submitted to the Complete Streets Program, so that these streets can complete streets. Tonight, what we've got, that is the Complete Streets Policy, which includes a vision and intent for the town, the Complete Streets, their core intent, and some best practices that will be implemented, and how this program will be in town. So I believe we will all copy the, the policy. Okay. So, the program gives us some very specific phrases that you can use. These policies are scored out of one hundred, maybe to eighty, you know, in a town. So there's not too much leeway in what would be your interpretation, if there's sort of supposed to be the Complete Streets vision, what's happening in town. So basically, what the policy entails is that you understand that the streets are for pedestrian bicyclists, not pedestrians. That if there is a big, 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 big project kind of, that it would be nice to think about these sidewalks and providing bicyclists, um, brand of roads, could be helpful. Given the situation, it comes up with a road construction project, and there's room for biking, um, maybe I'd say you'll consider that. So that's what this main policy entails. The steps after the policy is coming up with a prioritization plan. They've already submitted a technical assistance application to the state to help fund some of the research that's been set. One of the things that we're planning is to do before we have our analysis, and sort of map out where all the sidewalks are in town, where all the trails are, where bicyclists tend to ride, and see where those missing links are, that would be nice to be able to connect all the sidewalks to each other, providing more trail walking, and make sure that it's available to walk to schools and other recreation areas. The other component is that there needs to be a lot of level of input in coming up with a prioritization of different projects that we have around town. Something that a lot of the third towns have found that would be successful is using PIS now, which shows, it's like a Google search to be able to tab, and you can click the point where you don't want that intersection, saying why, and then you just look at the information, and use that to see if there's a way that you could go get through that. So then after we have our prioritization plan of that list of fifteen potential projects that we can apply to the state for funding for construction of, and it's up to four hundred thousand dollars per year for, for construction costs, that is a grant for town. So that's the quick overview of the program. Our goal is to have a prioritization plan by April of twenty twenty-one. And we'll, we'll just need to make sure that the policy is in place before we can. So then.
Are we black or something now? We have something in the woods?
With this year?
Yes.
No, no, I think we have something, but it's a five bar.
Oh, yeah, that is.
Shared streets.
Oh, shared streets, yeah, I'm getting confused.
Um, but that program also is similar, where if something's not funded through the state or that, then we can just put it on our prioritization plan.
Right.
And it's funded through the streets, because it does.
Is there, is there cutoff time for the funding to be available? Is it year round?
So it's been pretty consistent. It started in twenty seventeen, and they've had consistent funding throughout the year. Will be applied in April of twenty twenty-one. They have two rounds of cut off dates, and you only get one rolls per year, but you can apply in multiple years. So we have a plan, and a plan for funding in April twenty twenty-one. Once we work with them, usually there's a lot of back and forth, it's rare that they'll set the crash, as it is, they'll want to put better foot in, and we'll have to go back and forth a little bit before they agree on it. Once they do, then the following year, we can apply for other projects.
Did I understand you correctly when you said there's potentially four hundred thousand dollars for a town?
Yes.
Then I assume that includes engineering costs too?
So it's only for the construction costs.
Okay.
But that kind of include like the physical draft survey of the sites, and all the equipment needed, and contractors, so it's just a construction component that can be used for designing.
Just trying to figure out. With the other program, the shared.
Streets.
Shared streets, do they allow you to go for engineering costs on that grant?
No.
For the shared streets program, what, I'm thankful that Steve was able to find money in his various pots of money to have Green Seal do the engineering. They prepare all the engineering specifications, that was part of the application that was sent to the state. I, my hope is that it made it more attractive to the state. We're still, it's on my list here for later on, but I'm hoping we resubmitted, the application was rejected the first go around, we resubmitted, sort of upping the emphasis on the safe routes to school aspect. So my hope is that we'll get funded now. Without the design work and such, without the estimate, I think we would be in poor shape, because they want as close to shovel-ready as possible, because the intent was to get all these projects on the shared streets list done this summer, early this fall.
So, so what we're looking for, Steve, is just to sign off on the.
Do we have a showing?
Just on the cost.
For the Complete Streets, I think, and then the yellow one, that, that.
We should do it in there.
Yes.
Are there any conditions to when we do get the grants? Are there any conditions that would be set for, for the town?
Um, generally, it's supposed to be all summed over the program before, a lot of the funding. And then there's the, just make sure that it goes through a payroll report, everything, and we'll reverse it. It's not, it's the same way that they're giving technical assistance, where they create a contract with the town, the town contracts out to someone, and the state will reverse the contract for this town.
Also, it's the state will reimburse us later?
Yeah.
But we'll know if we.
Yes.
Before.
So it'll be committed, it's not going to be a question of whether.
Are you potentially looking at any non-funding from the state due to COVID and everything going on? Could that possibly happen?
Um, hey, it's, I'm pretty sure that it's absolutely short of, to continue the program at the same level we have, because after right now, we're having those changes. So they're still saying up to four hundred thousand dollars. And it's sort of in the area, so if there's anything changes, we'll, we'll.
I think it's important for us to climb onto anything we can and assume that we can. My fear is the state revenue is going to drop dramatically coming forward, we're still working on last year. I think as it progresses, I think our receipts are going to get less and less, and that's when things end up on the chopping block. So if we have an opportunity to put something together, we should take advantage of it sooner or later.
I believe in the policy.
Okay, I was just going to ask, are there other towns in Plymouth County that you've worked with that you've gotten approval on grants at this point in time?
No. So Green Seal has one that has had effects on Complete Streets programming. A bunch of the other towns have all sort of got the same big, big people. So this, this will be our first, uh, for the Complete Streets that we've done through all the training. We've worked on similar grant applications in the past. We have all the design changes and certain areas to be open to, all done, hopefully.
Well, you're encouraging.
I can't know. I know in Kansas, you've got a Complete Streets program that's been continued for quite some time because of the contract issues, that's finally been resolved, I think it will start after the next sixty days, intersection, high street, and go in, I don't think we can get a nest of Complete Streets program.
So, well, you know, I guess.
I'll second it. I just, what is, what is the cost that we've had so far for this year?
Since October thirty, probably at exactly.
And some of that money, I believe, Steve is from the state?
On the.
On what we're doing right now with this program.
We can, we get reimbursed.
Right, no, that's my point, is that we are paying it, but we're going to get reimbursed from the state for these initial phases.
That's fair.
Right, yeah. I mean, we, we work a lot of grant reimbursement programs. We don't get the money upfront, because the state doesn't want to give money to a community that's not going to spend it. Right, but, you know, for instance, I have a state contract here waiting for the board to okay later tonight on this program, on this phase of it, so.
The only reason why I asked was the last line said that the town will seek out appropriate sources of funding and grants for implementation of Complete Streets policy, and advocate for such funding directly or through its affiliate. So we'd be advocating a town meeting for the direct funding.
And we've done this in the past. So, yeah, I have, I still have one more thing, I'm going to sit here. All of the things. Be encouraging to get your hands on it. Thank you, and you are, good job. Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you.
So you've got an eight fifteen with Patrick Mahoney from Robbie's Kitchen?
Thank you. You can't hear anything with a mask on?
Have a nice day.
Nice, Steve. The acoustics are rough in this one.
Is there already a speaking, anything to come more than second with the board? There's like a phone there, or people speaking, so that the tape can come out yourself.
Yeah.
Hope nobody's disrupted or anything.
So if you could introduce yourself to the board and your TV audience, because we're filming for later broadcast. Pardon?
Stand up or turn around?
No, no, just face, mask on, but everything else.
I'm Patrick Mahoney, and I'm in the department, and this is Robbie, and Robbie's Kitchen, and hopefully, hopefully soon.
Do I understand that not only are you the restaurant owner, but also own a property?
Yeah, I own the property as well.
I want to commend you.
Thank you.
The work you've been doing on the property, you've done a marvelous job, you're so much better than that, it's a real passion to the town, thank you.
Appreciate, no, thank you, thank you. Appreciate that.
Okay, enough of that.
Yeah.
You can go on and explain to us what you're looking to do.
So we're just looking to develop the restaurant, mostly takeout, especially now, and hopefully do, you know, we used to go with some pizza after, and stuff like that.
Okay. Um, I assume you've been to the board now, around, have you?
Yeah, we, yeah, we met.
We're all good, yeah?
Yes, we have our office here.
Building respect, please?
Yeah. Right, right.
Yeah, I was going to say, I know the fire department.
Yeah.
Have, have occasion speaking.
Yeah.
So I think we've got everything we need.
Yeah, Mr. Mahoney, you're, are you playing pretty eight tables outside?
Yeah, we have, tried to set up for three tables last time, so four people at each table.
So there is, there's.
Yeah, so the, the barriers, we have our sort of distancing, and everything else set up, um, so.
Great.
Hopefully.
I, I don't have any questions, Sean, you have anything?
So, what, the, why it's coming to the board is that all the restaurants, if they have, sit down, there's a common victual's license, even if they don't have an alcohol license. So for instance, Kikod Pizza or Centaro's, they don't have a liquor license, but they do have in, well, they did have seating, or I think Kikod still is doing seating, that sort of belt in Centaro's. So aside from the food permit that the Board of Health gives on food safety, in essence, you're doing the business itself, and approving the permit.
I think that's where they are from the Vittles.
Yeah.
Only all the people. Sean, any questions?
Do you have a menu?
You assume we're.
Yeah, I think, I think the website says pizza and pasta at this point.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, may the force be with you.
Yeah.
Well, I wish you the best of luck. Well, I wish you the best of luck.
We have a good, we need a pen. So, we need something like...
Oh, to Pam?
Can I get a motion to approve the licenses?
I'm moving.
Yeah, okay.
Well, I don't, no, I'll let you move.
I'll move.
I'll second.
All those are there. Yeah, that's the one.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you for that.
Any idea on the opening date?
Soon, hopefully next week, you know, if the board, you know, do other things to do, but I'm not bad.
Thank you, guys.
Since we're going to be back below 11, we can take masks off again.
Can we take a two-minute stand-up break?
Yeah, I'm going to take a break.
It's just that there was some trash there, that's all. No, I thought that where the trash was, looking at the property lines and stuff, the trash...
Second just?
Or was on the property with the, facing the street, facing the houses, that the trash was on the house to the left. Did I say it right?
Yeah, it's something that come from my throat, I can't get rid of it.
Yeah.
I ate dinner before I came, I guess something.
Okay.
You good?
But we know it's...
Am I ever?
Not a family, whatever it is, anyway.
Good, yeah, that's why I just wanted to know.
Now, I hope, I mean, they've had, the site has been unlucky, let's put it that way. Well... Well, I understand, but, you know.
Put cord in there. Yeah. He also isn't sold. I don't know if I have that, I'll have to look. Is it more cord, like? I got one like that. Get like three or four degrees hotter in here in the last few minutes?
Yes, because we turned the AC off, because Pam could, Pam could not, because we don't have a PA system, Pam couldn't hear the person.
Okay.
I'm hoping.
I'm hoping for that, those people to AC off, and then I can just, um...
Well, they were, they were closer to that mic, the one that's by Gordon.
If you hold them to the AC back...
I think as long as you get the gist of what everyone said.
Um, if you don't have the door to the mask, I can...
Yeah. I'm more controlled. No, we're done with the agendas, but the health stuff, I have to get the role. We still have exact, just sorry, but I gotta talk to them.
That's fine, it's just...
But no, it was not an illusion.
Just walked out of the room, then walked back in, it felt bad.
We'll have a discussion. Okay, so do you want to resume? Ready? So I'm gonna go back to nearer the beginning of the recycling piece. I'm not asking the board to make a decision tonight. It's typically the time of year when the board does. We could push this off, not to Thursday, but next Monday. Because I know that, I think it was Susan was going to be available to come in to talk with you all about this. So obviously, we do the annual recycling fee. The board has had several discussions during the last few months about the abatement policy and whether it'd be wise to eliminate the abatement policy. Not tell everybody you've got to pay, but eliminate it in the sense of only those people who want to pay it would pay it. People who don't want to pay the recycling fee would no longer have to go through the abatement process. My concern with doing that is that I think we will see fewer people end up paying this, the, in one of several different, you'll have one of, several different options. If you want to cut expenses accordingly, if there's going to be less revenue, you're, really the only place to cut expenses is to cut the hours at the recycling center, and it's fairly busy right now. Two is that you're going to draw down from the fund balance. But at some point, you do that long enough and you have no fund balance. So you can't do that for an infinite amount of time. Three is that you start paying, subsidizing what is an enterprise fund with raising appropriate money, i.e. property taxes, which then runs into the question, wait a minute. If these people are paying property taxes, why aren't they eligible to use the recycling center? Which then basically throws out the whole fee concept. You're not going to, and you'll end up paying for the entire amount out of property taxes, which is roughly, let's call it $150,000, $160,000 a year. Which means then you're cutting someplace else to run the recycling program. The last option would be in the end not to have a recycling program. Close the transfer station, close the recycling program, and eliminate it. We just get out of the business at all. However, that also means getting out of the curbside collection business.
Yeah.
Right. And as some of the committee members pointed out, for many people who, they're, not everybody participates, obviously, but a number of people who participate use it because it's less costly for them than going to the commercial haulers. Because they're on a per-bag system, meaning the town is. They don't use a lot of bags, and they end up paying a lot less via the bag system than via a private hauler, which might be $600 to $900 a year. So, however you're going, whatever you're going to do, if you, you know, if you do eliminate the abatement process, you need to have a plan in place of what you're going to do to respond to the fact you're going to have less than revenue, both short-term and long-term. I'm not asking for a decision today either about the fee or the abatement process. Maybe move it to Monday's COVID meeting, but you're going to need to do something.
When do we have to set the fee by the week?
Well, you don't want, you really don't want to overlap with the property taxes. If we're assuming the property taxes go out October 1st, you need the recycling bills to go out no, you know, no, early, no, later than September 1st. So on a practical basis, really, next week.
I'd like to have some participation in residents in this board.
Can I just ask that, for the meeting, that we have data that says how many people haven't paid?
No, it's, um...
Like the...
Yeah, well, we already have that. So for fiscal '20, let's see where we are here. Because I know that Sandy provided me with some information on that. Let's see if the truck is screwed. It was about 8.8% got the abatement this past year.
We've been getting a lot of it.
About 80, well, yeah, because a lot of people have been applying also. About 80%. So that's the recycling, I think, yeah. So 80% paid, 8.8 were abated, and so we still have about 11% outstanding.
But that 11% is not getting any service.
Correct, they haven't, they didn't pay, they didn't file for the abatement. Eventually, now, under the current system, they would have to pay it one way or the other, either when they do a turnover in their house, or when they apply for a building permit or something like that.
And of course, what's exacerbating the whole process is the value of the recyclables is paying out.
Yeah, it was, it was a different economy 10 years ago. We were getting at, for the most part, we were getting money from what we were recycling. Now we're having to pay sometimes close to what we're, the tipping fee is.
This is a real dilemma.
I'm gonna go open this food, but... This is not... Although I can work on getting you guys emails like that.
I think we should form a committee, share, and do solid waste.
Well, you already have a solid waste committee. You already have a solid waste committee.
No, 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 you have, I mean...
Oh, and add hot to help, help the solid waste committee? Okay.
No, you're not, you're not figuring that out.
Not enough committees. I wasn't even on the building, you know, needs committee, and I showed up to the meeting, and they said, "Why don't you be the chair?" So then I got put on that. I just think, you know, that roughly 20% of the people that aren't using it and aren't paying for it, we need to come up with a better system than the abating system, because...
I, I, yeah, I, I hear you, I'm not sure what that is, though.
And that's why, one of the reasons why I'm not asking you all to make a decision about it right now. To bring it back on Monday, we'll have some of the committee members here. You can talk about it more, and you can think about what the options are and which one you prefer.
Yeah, that, that makes sense, that's what we should do.
That would still give a little bit, I think, enough time for the assessor's office to transmit the bills, whatever they are, to the collector's office, we get them out. We don't have an overlap with the property tax.
Is the estimated bill, we use the same estimates as last year, is the bill going to be roughly the same?
Yeah, I mean, well, you know, we were using, I mean, when I got the numbers from the assessor's office, they simply multiplied everything by 50 based on the fiscal '20 fee. I don't think, you know, there won't be a material, if we, under the current system, there won't be a material difference in terms of balancing the budget against that. It's when the money really starts disappearing, though it's, you know, the fact that we had, you know, it's 8.8%, maybe two years ago it was 4% of the people were getting abatements. So we're slow, we're drifting out of balance a little each year.
And we're getting the fund.
Pardon?
And we're getting the fund.
Fund balance, yeah, right.
Is, I guess the only other thing for that meeting to bring up is, is there a way for the residents to pay when they go? There's normally they have to write a check. And when we're looking on the digitization of records and everything, I didn't...
Well, I can talk to Susan about doing, you know, what kind of kiosk we would need, just like we have downstairs. I mean, there'd be a fee associated with a credit card, for instance, but I believe it's doable. I mean, we do it downstairs with the clerk's office and the collector's office.
I just think that if we have somebody going there with items to get rid of them, especially one contact.
You're telling, you're telling, you're telling how fast you go, or if it's...
No, you know, how, you bring a bulky item down there.
But there's, yeah, but anybody who's doing that, obviously, has paid the recycling fee in addition to that.
Right.
Yeah, because that's the only way to make the system work. That's just it.
We will not talk about devious methods of...
But, but that's always a concern.
Yeah, and, you know...
If there isn't a viable way to dispose of things.
Right, well, that's...
People will come up and throw them.
Well, and I, you know, I...
About nine years, if we, if we pass on the recycling program, we lose just about everything, because they don't pick it up.
Well, yeah, I mean, I didn't even go into the dumping problem, that if you don't give people options, they'll, as you mentioned, they'll find options, they'll find some wood someplace to do the dumping there.
I remember when CRT TVs became an issue, you know, $25 or $30 a piece to dispose of, we started finding them along the street inside of the... There was no easy solution here. I understand that a lot of people don't want to pay it, but we can't figure out whether they're affordable. And coming down the days, that's an option, but then that disperishes on the other days. And if you need more help on those, I don't know, we're gonna have to talk about this, this is definitely...
So, so I'll bring it back to the board on Monday. If there's, in the meantime, if there's more information you need, just give me a call, we'll get it.
Can we get soon?
Well, that's the hope, yeah.
I, I guess I would just ask you to have numbers for the last three years, number, number of bills that went out, number of bills made, and who didn't receive service.
Right. Uh, we did town meeting, Universal email, for Upton, 163, 100 Lake Street, I talked to Alan about that. It's a, it's a similar situation, 163, but it's just a few bags of trash, it's not a huge eyesore. And it's, and Fanny May owns that also, so he's going to be working with them. Lingan Street Beach signage, Tom Schindler's working with Steve Hayward to get the no parking signs along both sides of the street. The residents with stickers only signed for the grassy area at Fourth and Lingan. Just noticed patrol officer fundraiser, their telemarketing campaign's begun. Fundraiser is notified, the police department knows that action is needed on that. For the town meeting on September 12th, they did have that proposal from East West to provide the AV and IT system between the multipurpose room and the gym. We need something, they did the work over in Plimpton, my understanding they did it successfully. The only, if we're not, the only option in terms of locations, the board hasn't indicated that it wants it anywhere other than the school. We had that offer from the Kingston Collection, you asked how much it would cost, they said about $600. So we would be in one room there, but the downside, as you all pointed out, is we're asking people to travel over there, and there may be some people who are discouraged or can't make it over there. So if you're doing over the school, we do need an AV/IT system to connect the two rooms. The price was $6,015. And I really need to give them a heads up as to, yes, we're going to use them, or somehow we're going to find another option, though I don't know what the other option is.
Well, if you give the option, gives the ability for more people to participate, take it to pay.
Is this a one-shot, you can set it up?
Yes, yes. No, this is a rental, in essence.
Okay.
Yeah.
Is this one Russell?
Yes.
You would still need a system if we went to Kingston, right?
No, well, I think they're providing the PA system and such, it's one room.
Yeah, I'd rather spend the money and have it in town, I think.
I, I think we're more likely to get participation in that.
Um, how many people are going to be allowed in the last song, I don't know.
Well, so we have two rooms that we'll be using. One is the gym, one is the multipurpose. The gym, proximally, give or take about 100 people can be in there. Multipurpose room, we can handle 40. After that, we'd have to close town meeting and figure out another solution.
And then we, and then they would have paid the $6,000?
Yes.
Turned in a hand.
That is impressive.
They gave it back, we didn't have it on the menu?
No.
Oh. I was thinking, Charlie, how many are we allowed to have again?
In where? Well, town meeting, under the governor's orders, town meetings are exempt. So, but we still need to follow the social distancing. So we probably aren't going to do exactly six feet, because once you're out of a seat, you're now closer than six feet. So it's probably going to be more like seven or eight feet between chairs. Now, people are going to, if you're in your pod, you know, you and a family member, or two family members, you know, you're a household, yeah, we're going to allow you to clump together. But it still means then there's that bigger space around you, so, because a clump is not one infinitesimal point, you're now spreading out, so we, we'd have to spread the chairs out. So, you know, so the limit is based on the social distancing, not the, for instance, we only can allow 12 people here. we only can allow twelve people here, we only can allow twenty-five in an indoor gathering. But the governor's directive is state, town meetings can have a hundred and fifty, you can have two hundred and fifty, as long as you got a big enough room, or you're doing it outside.
At the collection, what did you get in there?
Pardon?
At the Kingston Collection, what, what did you notice?
I, well, again, I don't know. I, they handled Kingston, I would.
Kingston only had about a hundred and thirty people show up.
I mean, I can, I can contact them and find out.
No, no, I can't, I can't get the Kingston Collection.
No, I understand, I can contact the Kingston Collection, find out big, big the room is, but.
I just have.
I don't know if we touched on this, so we did, I called it in. But like Charlie was saying, is Bear and Austin somewhere to do it outside, or outside? No, I'm not sure.
The, outside, the best thing for us would be the fields. The Kingston Fire Department wouldn't allow Kingston to do it over at their football field. So in terms of a, I mean, I think there are other towns that might, you know, again, similar situation, they might have a football field or something that we could use, but so far we haven't gone that direction. Because it, it would be bringing everybody out of town. So if we're gonna do it outside, we could do it there. There are all other logistical hurdles in that. We have to put a good enough AV, PA system and everything else. Dennis has some challenges in terms of vision problems, and you're talking, you know, you multiply, I don't know what the football field is, but at some point, you need at least that much for a certain number of people. You need all the, and just you need to pay for getting that, all the furniture and everything else set up, and whatever else you need. So, I mean, there, no matter what solution you pick, there's always gonna be some logistical hurdles. It doesn't mean you can't do them, it just means you need to acknowledge them.
Two and a half rain this fall time.
More mosquitoes.
I didn't know, would, if we're in two different rooms, would we be able to do electronic voting?
No, nowhere, there's no plan for electronic voting.
I, I just didn't know if it was.
We would do, we would have counters in both rooms.
In both rooms?
And we'd need them, because Dennis couldn't do a voice vote. He'd have to listen.
Yeah, because he.
Yeah, I mean, I think, you know, I'm gonna be working with Barbara, I'll work with Dennis. I think we'll have some sort of system of placards or something, so that it's visual, either, so that Dennis can, instead of people yelling at the top of the lungs, okay, I'm putting up a green, I'm putting up a red, whatever it is, I mean, whatever you want, put blue and yellow, doesn't matter. But he'll have, be able to see visually what the count looks like, and say, okay, fine, I don't need to get an exact number, majority, two-thirds, whatever.
I see, when you're standing counts for.
That's why you'll need counters. Well, the thing is, you don't need standing counts. If you have the placards, people just raise the placards, and people count the placards.
Close the city.
Yeah. Well, so people don't have to stand as long.
Do you wanna, Troy, did you already make a motion?
Yeah, I'll, I'll move it, if we, if sixty, six thousand dollars change.
Okay, I'll, I'll second that.
All of you agree?
Okay, so the second thing, not to do with town meeting, but again, AV. My analysis was to make a proposal for a permanent system, and not in the sense of permanent as installed in a particular room, but we would own the equipment. Reason for this is, right now, the maximum number of people we can have indoors is twenty-five. Given where, that the governor's slowly dialing back all this, for instance, the, once we hit eleven people, we had to put masks on, that the outdoor gatherings, he just reduced from a hundred to fifty. I think it's unlikely we're going to be able to increase outside of town meeting the number of people that are allowed in a room for a while. So, for instance, we ran into this problem with a planning board on Thursday in terms of the number of people in the room. We kept hitting twenty-five. During the public hearing on the zoning bylaws, we were basically at twenty-six. I scooted my butt out to the doors, I was an inch over the threshold, just like we were doing here, so we could stay at twenty-five. It wouldn't surprise me if at some point that evening we were at twenty-seven or twenty-eight. I wasn't counting every second or, you know, having a clicker or something to do that. But the problem is that legally, we can't have a meeting with more than twenty-five people. At the same time, you also have people who may be uncomfortable meeting in a room with other people. We've been, we were doing Zoom, obviously, for the first three months of the pandemic. Some meetings, some committees are still doing it by Zoom, some of them are meeting, for instance, right here, CloudCom was downstairs, for instance. The idea is that we would, could have a hybrid meeting, in that, think of it as two separate rooms. There's an electronic room of everybody calling in via Zoom. You have a physical room. But the cameras, the screens, the AV system, everything are set up, so everybody sees everybody else. So for instance, imagine we'd have a screen by that wall with everybody's portrait there who's doing Zoom. There's a camera like this one or more with more microphones, and everything feeds back in, and we get a, we have a loudspeaker that, who's ever speaking on the Zoom room is, can be heard. Problem with all that, setting aside, you know, you gotta set it up, everything, is that it's, at least from East West, it's fairly pricey to do. It's, was, I think, was it sixteen, fifteen thousand approximately for a microphone, for a wide microphone system, and twenty thousand for a wireless microphone system. Setting aside that, we'd actually, if we wanted to go in that direction, we'd need three quotes. It's pricey one way or the other. It's reimbursable, I would believe, I would check with Plymouth County, but we don't necessarily, you know, we don't have a meeting every week that has that. I think what we've got left are maybe an occasional board select meeting if we're over there at the multipurpose room. We may have an occasional planning board meeting. We've got the ZBA, which is still sitting on the Country Club Estates application. They've not opened that hearing yet. The members are uncomfortable right now during the meeting either via Zoom or having it in person, because they're worried they'll hit the twenty-five that night, and boom, they've gotta close the hearing again.
But they could have it at the first.
No, they, they get hit twenty, if they hit twenty, well, I think they're gonna, they think they're gonna hit twenty-six people easily. I mean, we got twenty-five people for the zoning bylaw hearing, we could easily get twenty-six people for Chapter Forty-B. So what we're left with is, for those larger meetings, for twenty-six or more, we're left with either doing it via Zoom or doing it via a hybrid. And we can do, you know, it's awkward doing a Zoom meeting, it can be done.
Hardly present the plan.
Yeah, I understand, you know. And the thing is, for many of the people who, some people are calling in by a phone still, they're not, or, I don't, you know, some people are, you never know whether the person actually has video capability or not. If they just put their name up, that doesn't mean they're not watching on a screen, it just means they've chosen not to put the video on or whatever they're using. But if they can't see what's happening, and it's harder for them to be recognized in that fashion also, there's no, I can put my hand up, they have to text somebody else who sort of relays it to the chair, saying, hey, Joe O'Malley wants to speak, and somehow we get them in line. Again, I don't need a decision on this thing tonight, but I need to get some direction, so I can give everybody else some direction that, here are the limits still. If you wanna have a meeting with more than twenty-five people, you need to assume you're gonna do it via Zoom, for instance.
I would recommend if we're gonna do it, that we do the wireless mics.
Yeah, I agree.
I, I would request that you get the three quotes, just so.
Yeah.
We know what we're looking at for Monday, I guess Monday's meeting. I'm sorry, why wireless? Because it's easier to set up and move.
Yeah, you don't have to run the wire, so you're gonna be tripping, you know.
I just, I, I mean, bringing my camera in here and trying to do the Zoom, I think it's helpful to people at home, but it was very tough to actually pay attention here. And, and like Chief was saying, that he couldn't hear Charlie with the system that I brought in, because he forgot the mic that night. But I did buy a wire, and I was just busy tonight to bring, so I can try it for Thursday to plug in here, and try to use the camera for all the mics, but, you know, mine's just an ad hoc thing to try to get public participation. If we had something that everybody could use here, I think it would be.
So let me do this, let me start getting other quotes, see what we got. I mean, okay. I think, you know, I think certainly for the rest of the year, and maybe likely into the winter, we're gonna not have a major change in all this. Until we get a vaccine, we may need a system like this or do via Zoom for a while. Yeah, well, I'm not knocking on anybody's door in Minsk, so. Okay, let's see. We talked about COVID and limitations to sizes of meetings, so outdoor, it's up now down to fifty. Susan's having to deal with having her events over at the tent chair, she wants, she's now telling people ten's the limit, because at ten, at eleven, they have to wear masks. And they don't want to wear masks. So she's saying basically, first time people sign up for a program, that's it. The other thing is that, I mean, you can drink and eat, you can take your mask off, just like you were at an outdoor dyeing facility, but you gotta put it on once you're done. So, you know, there's a limitations now. Shared streets program, I already gave you update. Accommodation for officers, I'd like to read that letter from the chief. Find it here. Sorry. Because it was a nice letter. Here we are. Dear Board Select on July thirty-first, Sergeant Patrick Sterling, Officer Patrick DeRue, and Officer Andrew Lidsky responded to Fifty-One Pratt Street on report that a male was unconscious and that CPR instructions were given to the caller. The officers responded immediately to this location, a power rival observed a male in cardiac arrest. The officers quickly took over life-saving medical care, which included the use of an AED. They were able to get a pulse back on the patient before fire EMS personnel arrived, and took over advanced life-saving techniques. The patient was transported to the hospital where he's recovering after surgery. In speaking with Fire Chief Veros, he informed me that had not been for the quick action of the officers at the scene, the patient would not have survived this medical emergency. Studies have shown that every minute that goes by, a person's survival rate drops by ten percent. The officers' immediate care, having the proper training and equipment, came together to save this gentleman's life. Their actions in dealing with this medical emergency should be commended, and their service to their community acknowledged. These officers showed great professionalism and proper use of their training experience and equipment to bring a successful conclusion to what might have been a tragic result for this family. I'm sure they will continue to be great assets to the town of Halifax.
That's a terrific however, and you'd like to give your credit to themselves and the town in general. Is there something we can do to acknowledge this to them?
Yes, yeah, that would be great.
Might they show a letter, a recommendation?
Yes, absolutely, put it in their files.
Second?
Library surplus equipment, I guess it was, I don't know if it was an old leak or whatever happened, but they said there was a leak in the storage room, and they had a telescope, a square winning table and a round winning table that needed to be disposed of. I guess they couldn't be repaired for whatever reason due to the leak, just so the board's aware of that. Travel order, just. Well, the board could declare it surplus and say, okay, now we know what's already got rid of, so yeah. Tom, if somebody could make a motion just to declare those three items surplus and acknowledge that the library got rid of them. Just to be on the record for this meeting, the board did approve that modification of the board's, the town's travel policy based on the state, so that they changed the information that would be given to Department Director and Town Administrator, and indicated that the policy is gonna be rescinded once the state's travel order is rescinded, and will be modified as the state's off, the state's order is modified. So for instance, when other states are added or subtracted from the list of the non-risk states, the policy would be modified. Replacement of the council on aging van, this would be tied into that town meeting, special town meeting, the cost to replace it is sixty-seven thousand five hundred and eight dollars. Usually we get an eighty percent grant for this, but we're out of the grant cycle right now. And what I think Susan's concerned is that they need an immediate replacement now, rather than waiting up to a year through the grant cycle. So she got an estimate, it's been brought to you, you'll discuss putting on the warrant if you do a special town meeting. Aldana Road, the silver legislation.
Just from my finance committee ears, can you just provide the mileage and?
Of the twenty-twelve?
Yeah, whatever majorly is done.
Well, I think, yeah, I think there's a, I mean, it was all over a hundred thousand miles, and they have a list of the problems, if you want.
Yeah, as long as you have that, so.
Yeah, we do.
We go to town meeting.
Safety issue, and the, the undercar and everything, rusted out.
Yeah, miles on this server, the town.
So the silver legislation went to the, before the House for a third reading, there's no additional information since July thirty-first. We did the animal control officers' interviews tonight. On the Andrews versus Halifax appeal one, there was a telephonic conference held on July twenty-ninth. Judge Ray ceded his stay until the twenty-first, allowed the party trust to continue, obtain the necessary permits. On the second appeal, the telephonic conference also helped, dealt with that, and it gave, Judge Ray gave Mr. Andrews until August eleventh to file a motion concerning a possible amendment to his complaint. That motion was to amend, the complaint was filed on August seventh, and then the discovery is to be completed in this case by January twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty-one. On the two appeals with the ZBA that were heard on Monday night, the ZBA denied both appeals and upheld the building inspector's decision to issue the building permits. Decisions, letters will be filed, and Mr. Andrews can appeal to the ZBA, the ZBA's decision. Let's see, Talent Bank Form, Kathleen Shervon, she's interested in serving the Board of Library Trustees, so that has been sent to Library Trustees, and also Michael Ragnata is interested in serving on one or more boards and committees, including the school committee, and that's important, because I'll get to that in a minute. And all of them have been notified, so all the boards have been notified. Old Colony Planning Council, Amy Eltrup is interested in serving as a delegate. I don't think we've had anybody over the months indicate an interest since John Mather had passed away. It's up to the board, but if she's willing to serve.
I was asked when I told her, you know, if they did better if someone else served in that position. I'm still a delegate at large.
Yeah. So if the board is interested, they could appoint her to be a delegate, or I don't know what the board's pleasure is.
I make a motion to appoint her as the delegate. I'm sure she's gonna be the ultimate, except.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm gonna delegate.
Well, we'll put you as an alternate also, though, just.
Can we get more than one?
I'll second that.
All of us agree?
Aye.
We already talked about the town meeting location, Aldana Road Parcels in Plymouth County. We continue to trade the documents, we should have everything squared away in the next few days, and the deeds will be filed by attorney mail. Open meeting law, I've provided each of you with a copy of the open meeting law guide from the AG's office, and if you'd like to set a discussion on specific items or issues, I can do that. Triple E mosquito control, Halifax is now in the high-risk zone, and aerial spraying was conducted last night. Officials will continue to monitor the area over the next two weeks, and may conduct a second round of spraying to achieve maximal effectiveness.
Does the whole town agree?
I believe so, yeah, we were in that box.
Do we, did we notify the sports, youth and rec, that, do we have to change any?
Not yet. I've talked about Valeria about that, and we're gonna be talking more about it on Thursday. I think his intent would be one of those dust to dawn, not, it would not, we wouldn't be carting people away from sidewalks, for instance, or backyards, but in terms of the town's facilities, we would issue, but, you know, the softball and everything, they're not there twenty minutes after sunset, so it really shouldn't affect them. Pope's Tavern Roof, we should have an advertisement in the news. Pope's Tavern Roof. We should have an advertisement in the newspaper this coming Friday where the documents posted online that day. Site visit scheduled for the 25th and bids should be due September 3rd. So we should have bids in hand to go to town meeting if town meeting wants to do that project. I don't have any other COVID discussion for tonight. Officer Ludzinski has filed a necessary letter with the board selectmen for the tuition reimbursement process. He's proposed taking classes in criminal justice at UMass and will be seeking reimbursement for tuition books and education fees per the patrol officer's contract. The town puts up 80%. He has to successfully complete the courses, I think with a B to get the reimbursement. So what happens is because it has to be budgeted, he needs to file it by September 1st this year for fiscal '22. Because obviously, we never budgeted for fiscal '21 for any tuition and such. So he knows this. I told him this. I'm waiting for a list of courses. If the board wants to hold this over until a future meeting this month to wait for the list of courses, it could do that. But he knows that all the course, he can't take an English course as part of this. It won't be, that will not, the tuition will not be covered. It has to be criminal justice or related field.
So the, I forget what you call those, but basically the minimum requirement courses like algebra and English, we don't cover?
Correct. It has to be the criminal, it has to be courses in criminal justice. So if he takes one in English or mathematics or physics or philosophy or whatever else, no. It has to be criminal justice.
Okay. And then the way the contract works is he has to give us notice for the upcoming fiscal year?
Right. So let's say he's taking courses in September of '21, not next month, but September '21. That's what he's doing right now. So then what happens is that the chief can come to Finance Committee and you all and say, I'm going to need to have this much money in the budget, assuming the officer takes the courses and we've got to pay for tuition books and fees to, so he's be, he would be reimbursed. And so then the money's put in the budget because we're required to do that under the contract. If he successfully completes the courses with a B in each of them, well, each course that he gets a B, he would get the reimbursement.
The tough thing is that is the registration being a year ahead of time, knowing what classes are actually offered.
So I don't know if the board wants to wait for the list of courses or say yes now or what the board would like to do.
Is there any way to selectively pay and the tuition just covers everything?
Well, it's a, it's a certain number of dollars per credit. So for instance, I'm making this up. A three-credit course might be $1,500. So that, that's, so it's, I know what you're talking about in the sense of you, when some people go to college, it's one bill for 15 to 18 credits for the semester. That's not how it's going to work with him. He will get a bill for each course that he takes that's for criminal justice. We will get that bill. We will see it. We'll see his grade and then we reimburse it.
Okay. You good? But I guess, so, but he will have to take other.
That's, I have no idea. I assume he's going to, he's aiming to get some degree, I assume. I assume he's going to have to take, as you're pointing out, other classes for the degree. But we will not pay for those other courses. Right. So let's, you know, let's say he's taking five, let's say for the heck of it, I'll make it up. He's taking 10 courses a year, so to speak. I don't know how fast he's going to do this, but 10 courses a year, five a semester, four years, those 40 courses. 11 of them will be criminal justice. 29 of them will be other subjects. We won't pay for the 29 courses. We'll just pay for the 11.
And then, and then on the, once he completes, then there's an educational increase?
If he gets a bachelor's in criminal science, for instance, or law enforcement, then yes.
So then that's the payoff on that side. The individual is, once they get the degree, they get costs?
Right. Well, you know.
Well, not costs, but they get a degree for that.
They, they get their education partially paid for, then they, right, they get a stipend every year.
Okay.
So again, I don't know what the board wants to do. You, I mean, I have asked him for the list of courses because I think it's necessary to have it documented which courses he's going to take to confirm the law, the criminal justice courses, but.
Then what's the way that you, I think it's.
Well, I don't know what he's doing about applying. All I'm saying is that he needs to, he's sent, he's sent the letter in before September 1st. He's made that requirement. I simply said to him, I think we need to have the list of courses before the board says yes. But I'm happy, you could wait, you could wait until another meeting, you know, the minute he sends it, I'll put on the agenda for one.
Did he give it to you that he's already signed up for courses or anything?
Well, he would have to, he, these aren't going to count until September of '21. Let's assume that he's doing a regular fall semester in, at UMass. It's not this fall. The way it works is that because of our budget, we need to budget money for this. We can't budget money when he comes in now in the middle of the fiscal year. So if he comes now, he's saying, I'm going to take the courses during a period from July 1st of '21 to June 30th of '22, not the year right now, but the next fiscal year. The chief.
So it's not a reimbursement of this year's courses?
Correct.
An approval of next year's courses?
Yes.
That's what I was confused on.
So the chief would then come in January, submit a police budget, including a sufficient money, amount of money for his reimbursement, assuming that he's going to take the courses and pass them. And then once he does, we'll have money in the budget for paying the reimbursement. But that all happens in fiscal '22.
So really what's coming back to you now is do we want to see a list of the courses?
Yes.
Or do we just assume he will submit courses that are related to criminal justice? And we still have a lot to do with the same unit?
I'm fine to approve it because he's still going to get the B and you got to see the courses afterwards. So I'm fine with approving up to the 18,000.
Are you moving it?
I'll move it eight, I'll move the approval of 80% of 18,975.
Right. And then their books and fees are extra in the sense of we pay 80% of that, but he doesn't, different courses have different bookloads, things like that.
Okay, so I'll include the possible books and fees as well?
All of them fit?
Aye.
We're getting there. COVID on restaurants. We do, just so the board's aware, we have additional stipulations have been issued for the restaurant bars. Patrons need to consume food along with a drink and know that you can't have pretzels as your qualifying food. No events larger than 25 indoors, no larger than 50 outdoors. It doesn't mean you can't have that number of diners, but if you had an organized event like a wedding, it can't be more than, one way or the other, they get it.
I just, because they come in and.
Yeah.
Ask us.
So just on the Amanda Monte and Ed Johnson versus Halifax telephone conference was held on July 29th. Judge Vey ordered the parties to file by the 21st either a joint motion for remand, a rain report regarding their settlement discussion, or some other joint motion for appropriate relief. Mr. Lawrence Andrews filed a motion to intervene in essence to replace the town as a defendant on August 7th. My understanding is that Judge Vey denied that request. The parties in this case reached a settlement in the case and filed a settlement on August 10th with a conclusion that an Aquifer District special permit was not needed by Ms. Monte and Mr. Johnson, and therefore the decision by the planning board to deny the special permit is null and void. Well, I don't know if there'll be any other legal action on that, but that's the state of where that case is as of now. We already talked about complete streets. I do need the board to approve the 112 budget for September. Sandy sent that over to me earlier today. This is a monthly one that we've been saying this day. We previously did the July and August. Since we're having town meeting on the 12th, we need to have a September budget in place before the Department of Revenue.
So move it. I'll second.
All of them fit?
Aye.
You already talked to Richard Green about his Eagle Scout project. Tom Schindler has asked the board selectmen to request that a floodlight be placed on the telephone pole at Lincoln Street Beach because he's hoping that this will reduce the amount of trash and front paraffin area that's left there along with cars ruining the parking lot.
I like the idea, but I have my doubts whether it'll work or not because if anybody wants to do something materialous, you know, should break the light.
If it's a pretty rugged light state, you put industrial cages on it, maybe use a home particular.
Well, you know, I'll, if you approve this, I'll talk to my contact over National Grid and say, we need something that's more vandal proof than your normal floodlight.
Sorry.
While we're bringing up the beach, there was a lot of altercations there that were extremely scary over the weekend. I was out in a boat and I was thankful that it broke down for a minute because a man was on his boat and he was moving from by the beach and there was altercations with non-residents and like a huge blow-up fight of swearing. We had kids with us. We had to tell them to block their ears. There was threats of fights and there was a big issue down there. So the Halifax Beach area is starting to talk about what we can do to make sure that people that are on the beach are residents, taxpayers, because you should see how much trash they left over the weekend. And the license plates come back from McFumon, Everett, Brockton, and Easton, numerous towns around the state. And so they are talking and jet skis on the boat ramp. Not a lot of boats in and out. And it's, it's a really big problem, especially in the conditions of everything in the world right now. So just so that you guys are aware, it's, it's a little scary down there.
I heard that there was altercations down in the neighborhood.
Yes, and there was one earlier in the day too. And I chose to go to the little H O A beach that day in the afternoon to stay clear of all of that. But yeah, we using the boat ramp. If we had to deal with that, it was, it was not very, it was bleak very bad.
So we talked, talked before about a non-resident sticker, but only for people that paid taxes in the town, correct?
Right. Then you approved that. You did not approve a non-resident, non-taxpayer. So really, yeah, really. Heard? Lincoln Street Beach, yeah. Well, and the boat ramp, the Fourth Avenue boat ramp is included in that. And so it really comes down to, you know, the chief having to get more.
Enforcement.
You know, presence down there. And, you know, I know, you know, they will ticket people who don't have it, but I don't know how much, many hours he's devoting down there. And I can contact him and ask him to, you know, if possible, given what resources he has, to put more hours in there and ticket people if necessary.
One more suggestion on that. So they are doing a great job down there. I will tell you, they were all over the neighborhood. We probably noticed too. Like everybody was commenting on people in the neighborhood. But what about like trespassing versus the tickets? Because the tickets can't be given to the ones that park at Walmart that come through the paths. And then I guess they've been dropping off like grills and piñatas and things and loads like on the corner, like, you know, in the block that area. And then they come and they grab them up and they set up for the day. So it's a little bit tumultuous. I don't know exactly how we would handle that, but it's, it's not just parking.
Yeah, you'd have to talk to the chief, but I think that's a much more complicated issue to stop people.
I mean, unless you're going to set up town employees there and set up a different, well, but also different, you know, essentially do a, some sort of pass program that people have a card or something instead of a sticker.
An ID.
Yeah.
For me, this time, instead of not just parking for residents, the beaches for residents, the states parking is for residents and that could be a little bit of a gray area.
Well, and you're right. And we would have to have the science that says that. We don't, we've never established, and this is where it's going to start getting a little bit weird. Okay. Grandma doesn't live in Halifax. Grandma is visiting. Grandma can't go to the beach with the grandkids.
No, it's always been that they have to be with Halifax residents.
Right. But that, and that starts straining, okay, who are you with? You know, I'm not saying it can't be done. You just have, you just have to put the resources into it if that's what you want. Yeah.
I understand. We don't want to have a giant fight all of a sudden, you know what I mean? Like that happens to the other.
Could I recommend that we reach out to the chief and ask him if he could?
Yeah, that's where I was.
Increase enforcement?
It's possible, it's possible.
In fact, that's feasible for the, you know.
Well, I, yeah, I don't, I don't know.
The cars are easier issues, difficult is adding pedestrian traffic. Sorry, did you have a question?
I was just going to comment that I have family close in Duxbury and it's true. And they have the stickers on their car that they pay for. Kind of piggybacking on what Charlie said. But if I want to go to my mom's and go to the beach with the kids, we have to think there are. Or we have to make two women with the kids because my car may be there. I'll get the kids. It just isn't what it is.
Well, yeah, and as Amy pointed out, there are people now parking not at the beach anymore. They're walking down, because it's only a few blocks, and, no, listen.
We walk down.
Yeah.
We walk down, they just walk in the back of Walmart, it's five minutes.
That's second half, right?
It's right across from Fort Down, the path.
No, but I mean, if you were at Walmart parking, how do you go down?
Yeah, whatever way they're working, it's close enough to walk. If they, if people really want to make the effort, they're going to, they walk those few blocks. But yeah, I'll talk to the chief.
Maybe you could reach out to Walmart to see if, you know, drive through, not reach out, but watch the cars coming in if they're being dropped off and then, I, I don't know.
They've got enough on their. And maybe they're stopping, maybe they like those customers who are stopping for food at Walmart. Get a picnic together. Yeah, right. Okay. So last thing on my list besides exec is that Robert Dobby, W. Johnson has resigned from the Halifax Elementary School Committee effective immediately. The normal procedures to publicize a vacancy for two weeks and then receive town bank forms. The office staff would then check with anyone who sent one in during the last year to see if any of these individuals are still interested in serving. I know we just, I think it was one of the two we just got in the mail the last couple of weeks, they were interested in serving. Board would then receive the information at the meeting on the 25th and possibly, and probably set up a joint meeting with the remaining members of the school committee to have someone serve until the end, until the next town election on May 15th of 2021. I guess first of all, I would recommend the board send a letter to Mr. Johnson thanking him for his service on the school committee. But second is, is this procedure good for the board?
So typical of them?
I'll make the motion to send the letter. I didn't know where, there's a lot going on in the school committee and Mr. Johnson was on the negotiation. Probably going to have to call a school committee meeting in between now and the 25th to reorganize that committee. It might make sense to push it up another week or two from the August 25th.
Okay, so give more time for people to apply your say.
Yeah, I, I think so. Especially, I think there'll be some interest after our contentious vote that we had and the almost 200 people, I think, that were on that meeting.
Sure. I, you want me to just push it to September 8th?
Can we do that?
Yeah.
Okay. That, that'll give me at least time on the school committee to.
Do you need a motion?
Yes, please.
I'll move it.
Second.
And that's both for the letter and setting up, please. So I have nothing besides the exec. I don't know if the board has anything else. And unfortunately, I do need to go and exec about the negotiations.
Okay.
Yeah, I need a motion.
So.
I think it's on the agenda.
Contract negotiation has discussed a strategy to respect the fourth of bargaining and opening may have a detrimental effect on bargaining position of the town and also on litigation. Again.
Good night.
.....................
May, I'd just make a friendly amendment to say firefighter sergeants, patrol officers, highway mixed unit police chief, fire chief, town administrator, and all unions of Silver Lake Health, uh, Silver Lake Regional School District and Halifax Elementary. I'll second.
Yes.
No, you second.
I'll second. Mr. Garrett.
Yes.
Mr. Loew.
Okay, thank you all for watching. Wash your hands and get the mosquito propellant out.